Commissioner Tuno will join us when he arrives. So, I'd like to welcome you all back to the Planning Commission meeting. And here comes Mr. Tuno now. So where we left off was we were still going through the public comments. And I believe we were to Colleen's comments and one of them had to do with if we changed the verbiage on the paragraph we just eliminated. So I think that takes care of that, which had to do with the third paragraph of air quality and greenhouse gases. The Planning Commission voted to delete that. The other comment was noted that there is a several historical societies in Calaveras County, including Calaveras County. I know McCollum Hill has one. And the comment was that it would be a good idea to just list these historical societies in here. And I would be in favor of that.
I agree.
Yeah? Okay. Vicky Knowles wanted to add Mercer Cavern to the list of, are those state designated? Was it state designated? Okay. Okay. Tonya was, had some comments about the sustainable communities, which we are investigating further. And then she hoped all voluntary, all historical designations were voluntary. So I can speak for, in McCollum Hill, they all are. Those are all property owners. Asked to be included in that? The, okay.
That, this particular issue on the historical designation, this, this section doesn't address that. The, and I'm not sure how it works with, when you own a building, let's say, an old building. And I don't know how it works with respect to that designation. Does the, in what role the owner plays in that. Hopefully, that she's right, that the owner doesn't want it to be a historical register, then it's not. Well, if the owner does, then the owner seeks historical registration through a certified society and gets it. Now, there's, there's ups and downs to that. It means you can't do certain things to your, your building. And it also means you don't have to do certain things. So I don't know what the process is, but in any case, I don't think this part of our general plan even addresses that.
No, this is just simply identifying, a discussion of what historical resources there are in the county.
Right. And I was just responding to someone who inquired about, is it mandatory or is it, you know, is it pressured on a property owner? And I was just saying, in McCollum Hill, with the, the design review guidelines and the list of historic properties, that they are all at the request of the property owner.
Right. And in that, in that context, that's a different context. That's it. The community agrees that this, the historical society or what it, what.
Well, it is listed. It, it, it has to reach criteria and by a registered historian, has to certify that, which they all were. Yeah.
Sure. And they, but that doesn't mean that they achieve California State Historic.
No, no, it has nothing, it has nothing to do with that.
And all of that that implies.
Nothing to do with that.
Right.
Okay.
Again, it's just a list of information. And, you know, as we get into policies, I think Mr. McManus also brought up a concern about establishing historic districts. You know, that's, you know, again, something we've sort of identified, we have historic communities, but we haven't, you know, created any historic districts. And there's really nothing, I went back to the policies that actually say that we will create historic districts. So I don't think that, you know, the concerns that he has raised, you know, are, nothing in the general plan that gets to the issues that he, he raised as far as requiring that we establish historic districts.
Right. These buildings in, in Moke, they get whatever benefit or restrictions they've agreed to by virtue of their, their little closed society there, their, their closed system. And it's totally separate.
Right.
Okay. And so then, I think the other comments I had, did, it seemed to be more of personal opinions and unless there's, you guys had something else?
No.
Okay. All right. We're good to go on? All right. So we're moving on to goals and policies. So who wants to go first?
Maybe we go sort of section by section, if anyone has any concerns about the water resource and water quality section.
Good. No? A good water quality, water resources?
I have. Yes.
We're on page 13.
13?
Yes.
The word reasonably was deleted. Why is that, may I ask?
I just felt it was sort of a superfluous word. It really wasn't provide any meaning.
It's associated with IMPF2C. And I was anticipating that it was deleted because it is addressed in the associated element.
Yes.
So whatever, whatever standard, not standard is the wrong word, whatever considerations are embedded in PF2C, correct?
The, the implementation measure is.
I'm trying to find it right now.
Yeah. PF2C and 2G.
It's not here.
Yeah, it's, it's page 18.
Well, it's actually, that is in the public facilities.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This gets to my comment at the end of that. Maybe this policy doesn't belong in this section. Maybe it belongs in the public facilities and services, since it's addressing public steward's disposal. This is where the overlap, you know, gets in to all aspects of the general plan. You know, it could go, really go anywhere we want it to go. It doesn't really matter to me. But the, the implementation measures in the public facilities that we haven't got to yet, so this may change, but the ones that I referenced here were about adopting standards for determining when public water and public wastewater shall be required and deemed available for the purposes of the general plan. So it's, it's something that will determine in the future is, what's that threshold? You know, available can mean, and I don't care really if we put reasonably back in there, I just, I just felt it was sort of a superfluous.
Well, the way I see it is, you could read it as an absolute. It's on the street or it's not. Or you could say, well, you've got a pretty good sized development here. Economically, it's feasible to run the line and extension, whatever, you know, quarter mile, mile, whatever it is, because of the size of the development that you're trying to serve. So available becomes pretty, pretty broad in that sense, but I just didn't know that the, the implementation measure nails that down any better. I can't. So how do we view availability on hookups?
Well, that's what the, again, PF2C says, adopt standards for determining when public water and public wastewater surfaces shall be deemed available for the purposes of consistency with the general plan. So the idea is that we come up with that in the future.
Right.
We look at it more in detail.
Right.
And, you know, sort of your example of, is it just simply maybe not cost effective? Is it too expensive for an applicant? Is that really sufficient to say, sorry, it's still available, it's just going to cost you some?
Yeah.
And that's just the cost of doing business? Or is there some kind of threshold to be established that says, and I don't know what that could be, you know, that if it's X number of feet or miles away, then it's not considered available? If it's outside the district, it's not available? Those are the kind of things that we would look at in the future and say, okay, how do we actually implement this policy? So whether we keep the word reasonable in there or not, I don't think it really matters.
Well.
You're right, because it's covered in the, we're going to come up with a plan that determines.
That will have specific standards.
A formula of sorts.
Yes.
And I would suggest that possibly, since there are no implementation measures associ- you know, in this element, that, and that there are going back to public facilities, is that maybe it is more appropriate there.
I agree.
And that's where I read that. I know I dug back into the binder, which I have, I can go back to it. But that satisfied me that that's where it's going to be addressed.
Okay. So, so a general consensus that we'll move this to public facilities?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll just keep going if I may. The last sentence, oh, in PF2C. Should we go to the implementation measures when we're, in the context?
I don't know. Why shouldn't we wait?
I think that this is, this whole policy is being moved to the public facilities. Why don't we cover it?
Let's wait until we get into that.
Okay, you're moving it. All right. Then I'm off to 1.4. Are we moving that too?
Yeah, it's moving.
Okay, then it's done.
No, I don't think 1.4.
We're not moving this.
No, there was just 1.3.
Okay, the new one, 1.4. Your new one.
Okay, timeout. Which one are we moving then?
1.3.
I hit the wrong one.
Encourage the use of designed features and new development to capture stormwater and recharge groundwater. And my note is, what would be the effective difference between the drainage control systems referenced in implementation measure COS1B that goes with this, with the addition, with the addition of the runoff capture and groundwater recharging goals? COS1B, flipping to that. This is talking about erosion control, drainage, et cetera. If, which is, which is normal. You see a development and you see the, you see the pit and there's some rocks in there and it's trying to, it's controlling the, the runoff. Now, if you add the goal of encouraging the design features to capture stormwater and recharge groundwater, how does that change the design of a system that was otherwise, that would otherwise be used for runoff control?
I don't think it does. I think what, you could actually end this after development. This is more of just sort of an explanation of why we would want to do this. The, the, although it sort of explains a little bit more of why we would, what we would do. The, the implementation measure gets to the specifics of how we would change our design manual to provide for those kinds of, of design features. Here's a standard the county would accept for putting in drainage basins and detention ponds and that kind of stuff. To capture that water. Because, you know, there's, so two different ways you look at water. You get it off your property and it's no longer my problem. Or you handle it onsite. And the movement we're trying to go to is you handle more of it onsite as you can. So that it captures that water, it just doesn't push it down the hill onto the next, next property. But it actually then has the benefit of, you know, storing that water and eventual recharge in the groundwater basin.
Okay. But the, I guess the issue that I have is, right now, if, if someone's building a development, there's going to be a lot of pavement, there's going to be a lot of roof square footage.
Right.
Are they not required to, to address the runoff from those hard surfaces?
Yes.
Okay. With some kind of a basin effect?
Not necessarily. You could just make sure that the downstream facilities are sufficient to handle it. If you're, you know, and, and this is typically what's happened in the past, is that you've got your water, you've got it all channelized down to a point, and once it's discharged from your property into, say, a, you know, a drainage, you know.
A creek bed or something.
Creek bed or something like that, that's it. That's, that's all that needs to be done.
Right.
And I think what we're, what I'm trying to say with this policy is that we want more of that retained onsite, so it has a chance to percolate into the ground, just so it doesn't get flushed downstream.
Okay, but, okay, that, that brings up my question. Then we are going to adjust our, this contemplates adjusting building codes to, to require these?
More of engineering standards rather than building codes. So when the Public Works Department looks at a site plan for development and, and the engineer that's designing that, they'll say, oh, I need to deal with this. You know, there's going to be some runoff, you know, it's going to be discharged downstream at some point in time. But to the degree possible, feasible within the design of the project, let's retain some of that water onsite. Let's put in those kind of drain, those basins that you've talked about.
Okay. And where I'm trying to, where I'm, what I'm trying to avoid is that the, the possibility that you can't have your project because there's no way to install a, a capture device, a, a capture mechanism for, to meet this goal. So are we saying, if it's possible on a site?
Right. Encourage the use.
Practical, encourage, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm fine with that. But that's all I have on that one.
I might add just one thing to that is, there are a lot of jurisdictions now, particularly in Southern California, that are absolutely demanding that developers use permeable concrete. And then you put, you'll see, if you have a big five acre parking lot, where's the water runoff going when it rains? They use permeable concrete over maybe a three foot layer of, of drain rock.
Yeah.
And then the rainfall goes right through the permeable concrete, it's still a good parking lot. And then it goes into there, then it percolates down into the water table.
Okay, so you could even have something like that as an option for a.
Right. We're not mandating it, but we're certainly encouraging that. And, and through our revision of the design standards, those kinds of feasibility, you know, possibilities, here's what the county would accept for that kind of use.
Thank you. That's all I have on that section.
Any other comments? Are we moving to biological resources?
I have a question on 2.1. Where do we, where do we have a definition for sensitive biological resources? Where can we go to find what that is, in the county's view?
Typically, that would be something that comes out of the environmental review process for a project. So when a project comes in, through our sequel review, we're required to, the applicant's required to do a biological study, determine are there brain endangered plants, are there, you know.
Okay. So it's a term of art that would be, would come into play in the environmental review process?
Yes.
From a, from a list that the, that department has?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's all I needed to know. On 2.2.
I'm still on 2.1.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So the set, okay, so new development shall use site planning techniques, including buffer setbacks and encourage clustering of development to protect sensitive biological. I want to add the word encourage.
Okay. Consensus?
I agree.
Yeah, that's good. I have a question just on the goal. In my recollection, weren't we just starting with, like, in this case, diversity, wouldn't be a, just to be consistent? I mean, I, of all of the other, isn't that what we've been doing?
I know that we took out the verb.
Okay.
I don't know, doesn't matter. I think that we've used articles in front of.
Okay.
In, in other ones, but it's probably not.
Not a huge deal, just looking for consistency, whatever is, okay.
Easy one, comfortable either way.
Okay. Well, me too.
I'm on 2.2, if you are.
Sure.
The language that I have a problem with is maximum extent feasible. I don't know that there's two different extents, one's maximum, one's something else. But even so, I would, I would rather see, unless there's some compelling reason, otherwise, I would rather see practical, practical and impractical substituted for feasible and So it would read, resources to delete maximum to the extent practical and, I've confused my own.
And where impractical.
And where, and where practical mitigate impacts consistent with state and federal policies?
No, or where impractical.
Where impractical.
Mitigate.
I guess that's where, where avoidance is impractical, is what we're saying there. Where.
Yes, 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 yes. Avoid impacts to special status and sensitive biological resources to the extent practical and where impractical mitigate impacts consistent with state and federal policies.
Yeah. Do we, just, it's not that the mitigation's impractical, but it's the avoidance that's impractical. Do we want to clarify that? Is that necessary?
Correct.
Yeah, I think avoidance is impractical.
Okay.
So.
So it'll read, avoid impacts of special status and sensitive biological resources to the extent practical. And where avoidance is impractical, mitigate impacts consistent with.
Right.
State federal policies.
Is the word practical or practicable?
I'll leave that one to.
I just raised the question. I think it's the latter.
Dr. Hayakawa over here.
I'll leave it up to the planning director to get the right word.
I'm done with that one. I'm on to 2.3 and 2.4 as a combined note in my words, in my notes.
I'm sorry, 2.4?
2.3 and 4. And my, and the reason I've combined them is that I'm, I'm asking the question, do we need both? Or why do we need both unless 2.3 seeks to affect lands retroactively? Now, why did I write that note? Protect aquatic wetland and riparian habitats from the effects of erosion, siltation, encroachment, and alteration. That's 2.3. And then 2.4, 2.4 is require new development to identify and mitigate impacts to wetlands, riparian habitats. It sounds like the same thing. So if we needed both of them, then that would mean 2.3 was a retroactive action. And I don't think we, we can do that. Do you follow my logic?
Yeah. The other way to look at that is that the 2.3 is ongoing activities.
Yeah.
Day-to-day activities, either by the county or other actions that are taken. And this is specific to new development. Now, it may be possible to combine those two into a single. So it's, it's not just new development, but where there are, because remember, the general plan applies to public agencies, the county, but not necessarily new development.
I like them separate.
Okay.
2.3 is not limited to what counties and other agencies do. It's, it applies to everybody. I have other problems with that, because it includes erosion and siltation, which are natural processes. That's how you got the rich dirt in the Central Valley and washed down the creeks. I would, I would think that, if you went, if you went back to the 1996 general plan that covered this subject, what it said was, protect streams, rivers, and lakes from excessive sedimentation due to development and grading. This would seem to say, I mean, I don't know really what it says, because you're going to have erosion and siltation. That's just going to happen.
I like the '96 language on this same subject.
I did too.
It's clearer.
Read that again.
Protect streams, rivers, and lakes from excessive sedimentation due to development and grading. Having said that, if that was a thought, it seems to me it's covered by 2.4.
Well.
Other than the grading part.
Peter's saying this, that maybe, maybe some examples of implementation of 2.3 would help as distinct from 2.4. But let's go to the implementation measures and find out.
2C.
Building step setbacks from streams, wetlands, et cetera. And, so that's a, that's a, that's a new building, a new development issue. And 2G is, again, a new development issue. So both of those implementation measures relate to 2.4, and they are listed in 2.4, as well as is 2B. It's kind of neither here nor there.
Well, I don't, I don't see why you need 2.3, given 2.4 and the implementation measures underneath it, which are the same implementation measures that you have under 2.3.
Right. If, if there's a different implementation, that's why we need maybe examples, if there's different implementations that somebody has in mind, different circumstances that relate to 2.3, then what are they?
1C.
And if, if they exist, they need a different implementation measure, because these aren't on target.
So I know there's two, it's like there's two votes to eliminate 2.3.
One here.
One here.
I'll give it one. You just got five. I think five adds good.
I'm on 2.6 unless somebody has a, oh, wait a minute. Page 19.
So at this point, before you move on, are you going to add 1C to, to 2.4?
Yes.
Okay.
The issue that I have on 2.5 is with respect to the implementation measure. But there is a second implementation measure for 2.5, so it's not writing on this one only. So I don't know whether to bring it up now or later.
I'm not sure I'm following you, so why don't you just bring it up now?
Well, if, if the only implementation measure for 2.5 was, was 2E, that, then I would go straight to the implementation measure. But there's more involved there, so it can wait till later. It can wait. It's, it's not a big deal anyway. So on 2.6, there's a state law having to do with Oaks, right?
Yes.
And this is one of those times when we're telling the public in our general plan, we intend to comply with state law. We've had this discussion before. I don't think it does us any good to say that we comply with state law. We just do. And people are obligated to do that. If, on the other hand, we were to say, make available, I mean, do something real, which would be, make available the, this, educate the public about the state laws with respect make available the, educate the public about the state laws with respect to oak woodlands in some form, some, and then you have got an implementation measure that has to do with public education or something like that, then I could see the value of it. Otherwise, I don't particularly see the value of it. But CUS 2D is your implementation measure.
You might want to wait till you get to 2D, or we'll take it up now. But 2D, as I understand it, would have the county take advantage of a state law whereby the county can set, set forth additional mitigation measures, addition to what's required by state law or permitted by state law with respect to oak woodlands. So it's a kind of an opportunity.
Right.
If I understand 2D, to take advantage of something state law offers.
Yes.
To get greater flexibility on how one deals with these matters. I have some other issues with 2D, but they're wording issues, basically.
Okay.
Well, if we're still talking about 2D, then the replacement standard of three to one, when did that go into effect?
And that, do you remember, when we've been, when we started using that? It's been used by the county for a number of years.
At least as long as I've been here, at least seven years.
Okay, and is that, was that, did that come down from the state? You cut down one, you plant three, or I don't know, how's it work?
No, I imagine it just sort of evolved out of recommendations on various environmental documents. I know that, you know, some counties have very strict standards within their general plan of, you know, what kind of percentage can be removed, and a very long involved, you know, table of procedure of how to, at what point is a threshold reached and you have to start replacing. That's sort of what, if we're going to go that route, we would develop as, you know, the future mitigation or the future implementation, I mean. The, you know, in a place like Alaric County where the terrain and land use is quite different, these, you know, pretty challenging program to develop some type of mitigation. Where, where is it necessary to protect the oak woodlands? Where does it not really matter? Does it matter across the board?
Yeah, but that's.
You know, that's, it's a challenge, but we have to address it. State law says that we do need to protect our oaks in the county.
Okay, so the only thing we have right now that addresses the state requirement is a replacement standard of three to one.
Right.
You cut down a tree, you plant three. And you got to plant them, but they have to be a certain age or size already? It can't be a little twig?
I think.
It varies, I mean, you can do, you can do acorn plantings, but then you have to make sure that you monitor it over time, that sure that they grow typically, it's, you know, it's, it's very time-consuming and complex. And the idea is that we develop a program that is flexible enough to meet the needs of the county, and it may vary from location to location.
And there's also, it's not like any oak, I mean, an oak has to be a certain size and it's like, as in circumference and.
Actually, no, the issue is typically oak woodland.
So it has to be a canopy?
So it's just, it's the combination of large trees, small trees, and there's spaces between them, the whole habitat created through oak woodlands that the state has the interest in.
But isn't that based on the, on the canopy, there's a certain percentage?
Typically canopy.
Yeah.
And the state defines, I think, if it's more than 10% oaks within the canopy, and there's a certain, I don't remember what the percentage was, a certain coverage requirement, that's considered.
A space.
A woodland.
Yeah.
A woodland.
It has to be a certain percentage oak, and it has to be big enough to matter.
Right. And it has to be a certain amount of coverage. So, you know, when you have grassland savanna that has its, you know, occasional oak tree in it, that's not necessarily oak woodland. But at some point in time, the percentage of coverage of oaks turns it into what's called oak savanna. So it's, it's, you know, there's just a lot of nuances and variation.
Okay, so are we saying with 2D, we have this very incomplete oak canopy preservation program, and we need to meet the state standard, so we need to come up with something that's more complete?
Yes.
Okay. I'm okay.
And the interim will continue to use the practice that we've been doing for the past at least seven years.
Right. Moving on?
Anything else in conservation?
Well, 2.7, my favorite subject. Support the voluntary establishment of conservation easements, et cetera. I think people know my views on conservation easements and I believe that the county should not be supporting any such thing. People want to do it, they can. I would suggest getting rid of 2.7.
In addition to that, and I agree with Mr. Wooster, the language itself, I disagree with. Conservation easements aren't, aren't voluntary in the, in my sense of the word. They're sold, you get paid for them. It's not an act of charity. So this is one of those issues where we delete it from the general plan and it makes no difference. People can do it or not do it, there's laws that govern that issue. I have other reasons for not liking conservation easements, so that I think the county should not encourage them.
I don't think elimination of this policy gets to the basic, you know, concepts of, we've stated that we want to protect wildlife habitat and wetlands and oak woodlands. So whether we do it through conservation easements or other measures doesn't really matter. The basic policy is we are intending to protect those resources. And I think there are other policies that get to that. So if it's, if you don't want to have it in there, I don't think it changes the overall nature of what the general plan is trying to do.
Reason enough not to have it, in my view.
Or you could just have protect wildlife habitat, wetland areas, and oak woodlands. There is an implementation measure that speaks to that.
Well, you've got wetlands in 2.4. You've got oak woodlands in 2.6.
We've got the wildlife corridors that we're, we're going to be talking about in an implementation measure. It's not habitat, so to speak, I guess it is, but not as much.
You've got 2.2 that talks about special status and sensitive biological resources.
Now, there it is, yeah, wildlife movement and dispersal, that was.
Well, it sounds like the bases are covered and there's enough votes here to get rid of it.
What if we add wildlife habitat to 2.4? And sort of the list of things that we're looking at with new development.
What's the difference, for my education, what's the difference between a riparian habitat and a wildlife habitat?
Riparian is narrowly focused, it's the corridor along streams primarily. Riparian and other wildlife habitat?
I think we're good with adding wildlife habitat.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, okay.
That picks up the, any possible missing pieces that dropping 2.7 would lose. Are we unanimous on 2.7? I think so.
But getting rid of it?
Yeah.
I think with the addition of the wildlife in 2.4, I could support that.
Okay.
Anything else in this biological resources?
2.8, you have a typo on practices.
Oh, that, yeah.
Now, what about 2.8? I mean, isn't, isn't that essentially what those people in Nevada or Oregon or someplace did? The government tried to throw them all in jail because they burned off an area that had an invasive species?
No, that was Oregon.
For their cattle?
Well, that was Oregon, and that was on federal land. So what this is talking about is, you know, for example, the agricultural department helping with resources to get rid of star thistle or other invasive species. So using the county's resources where available, or helping connect property owner with maybe a federal or state program that helps get rid of star thistles, as an example.
There's no measure attached to that, what would it be?
Good question.
Have the county spray the star thistle along the county roads.
The, the policy says, support efforts to eradicate invasive plant species and encourage practices that reduce their spread. But there's no implementation measure for that.
But it would be almost like what you just said, it's like getting people, you know, like property owners in touch with resources that could help them eradicate it.
I'll work with Kevin, we can come up with some language.
Yeah, we already do that particular thing in our department in a number of ways, educational wise, identifying plants that may be problematic. Sometimes we actually will, if it's a A-rated weed, small, has a high possibility of causing problems, we may eradicate it ourselves.
There's some off-the-shelf language that you can?
Well, we can work together.
We'll, we'll do it offline.
So should we continue, or should we do public comment yet?
You know what, we've seen a lot of changes, let's let the public know.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we're opening the public hearing to talk about water resources, biological resources. And those two, before we move on. The goals and policies. Anyone?
You didn't have to.
Come on, I don't want to deprive you of the pleasure. On 2.3, 2.4, that water element, I would like to know exactly who going to take the responsibility of silt. We had a lot of problem in this county concerning silt. And that ran into both the state and federal agencies. Because wherever you have water coming down, especially like rain and heavy-duty rain, there's too many, some amount of silt. The silt comes down, that's when you get flooding. And the first district, we had a flooding, if you recall. Substantial damage of the gated community. And when the problem came in, nobody, the county, knew there was potential silt problem. But not disclosed to the developer, developer did not disclose it to the property owners. And when you get water, you're going to get silt. And when you get silt, eventually either that water is going to change course under, over, or around you, or you're going to get flooding. Somebody, someplace would be nice to say, hey, I'm controlling the water. I want to take the responsibility of controlling the consequences of that water. Because we run into a problem with fishing game, Army Corps. And it got to be quite nasty up at Cisco County. Because fishing game came in, no, the silt is running out front of your door, you can't do it because you're altering the water, natural water resources. So the silt is somehow, somebody got to take the credit or the blame for the silt coming down. And that's basically covered on 2.3 and 2.4. Now, one more thing that I would suggest, I hopefully, I just want to create more headaches for you. But plant that's coming in that foreign, is not natural invasive plant. Species?
Invasive species.
I love it when you talk like that.
Yeah, I know you do.
But why don't you consider the same thing for animal and fish? Hey, if you're going to have invasive species coming in to this county that can do harm and expense, shouldn't you consider the same thing for invasive species and an animal? Not native to the county and animals that.
Are you talking four-legged animals? Oh, okay.
Well, I think you could, there are a number of, and I think that's probably a good idea, we could add an animal species because, you know, things like the various mussels and clams that are getting into some of the water, quagga mussels, Asian clams, I think that's a good, a good addition.
That's, that's coming up, okay? And also, there's some fish, fish called smelt, that's a non-native species. But I don't think it's really affecting the county, but. All right, I'm just asking, you know, it's perfectly reasonable to have invasive plant. Should you consider invasive animals? You're going to be getting some wolves coming around here and a species of a bear that's going to be a lot bigger than what they used to be here. Are they native? Are they going to coming over here? That's coming right now, it's in the works. They're going to release wolves and big bears, big teddy bears, bigger than what we usually have. Are they native to this county? When it starts opening your garbage can in your backyard.
Illegal immigrant bears?
That's right, they don't have any papers. Can we put human beings in there too?
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good afternoon, Muriel Zeller, Valley Springs. I just had a question because as I was listening, you are removing all reference to conservation easements from the general plan and from the conservation and open space element in particular. And I'm wondering, can you give me some examples of what other tools you plan to use as part of your open space plan that is intended to protect and preserve open space? Because as I understand the California Government Code, that's the purpose of having an open space plan is to protect and preserve open space. So if you're not going to use conservation easements to do that, I'm wondering if you can give me some examples of what you are going to do in order to accomplish that?
Thank you. We're going to, it's on the list.
And just to piggyback on that, examples being permanent examples, not temporary examples, like Williamson Act is temporary, but we're talking permanent protection, thank you.
I hope I understood correctly, you're going to be striking 2.3, that aquatic land?
That's correct.
Okay, cool. And 2.5, a kind of a problem with identifying, protect corridors, important to wildlife movement and dispersal, now is that on private property? You know, like I have acreage, would that be on my property? That they're wanting to identify and protect corridors on my private property? And. Oh, and I had one other question I can't think of right now. Oh, the, the thing about the aquatic, that was, that was 2.3, that's being struck, that's fine. So, because I had a pond and I was concerned about that too, I don't want. Oh, the other thing, is somebody actually going to go out and count plants on private property to find out what kind of native plants and animals are going to be out there? And I think that's, quite frankly, ridiculous, if somebody's going to be going out and counting plants to determine what's out there and determine what a property owner can do or not do with their property based on what kind of plants and animals are out there. I don't think it's the government's job to be counting. I don't think it's the government's job to be counting animals and plants on other people's private property. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? Okay, so just kind of doing the same format. Mr. Race had a comment about controlling silt. I don't know that there was some action that we could take here, but just.
When it comes, when it comes to a big event like the heavy rains following the fire and creating a silt problem, I don't see that there would be a county general plan implementation measure addressing that. There would be, we're talking about agency, state agencies and whatnot, that jump in with whatever procedures and systems they have. On a small scale, Peter, maybe, were you thinking that we can't have somebody taking the silt problem from their property and sort of dumping it off on somebody else? Which I don't think can be done. You can't take your runoff and aim it at your neighbor's parcel, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
You're absolutely right. Okay, and I'm not advocating that. What I'm saying is that somehow people should have the right to dredge a clean a creek so the bottom doesn't come up, so the water goes out the side.
Okay, so.
That's why you're running into a problem.
Okay, you're?
Fishing game, Army Corps, what's the policy on that? I'm 750 feet above Calaveras, dude.
You mean what tools are available to a property owner to get rid of drainage?
They should have some kind of way to avoid flooding.
Okay, is that, there are building department codes that give them, here's what different things you can do, French drain and this sort of thing?
Well, I think you're talking about two different things. There's one thing that you can do when you're constructing, and I think it's covered under policy 2.4, that when you're putting a new development, you minimize the erosion and silt potential. You know, you have to put in erosion control measures. I think what he's talking about though is where there is silt that has occurred in the past and waterways are getting clogged with that silt. How does a property owner have the authority to, or get the ability to clean that out? And I think that's been, the field is covered with state and federal law on that between the Army Corps and the Department of Fish and Wildlife. We can't issue a permit that is in violation of state or federal law. So whether we have something in the general plan that says it's okay to dredge a creek, you still have to get a, you know, stream bed alteration permit. You still need to get a 404 permit or whatever is required.
Oh, that's what you're talking about. You were talking about cleaning out a depression so that it flows better and gets rid of, oh, now you're up, okay. I understand what Peter's saying. You understand what Peter's saying?
I mean, I think that in our safety element, we will address the need to protect properties from flood damage. And there, you know, we could maybe add some language in there that, you know, provide some, whatever limited ability the county has to facilitate that. Where we identify that there are, you know, drainage facilities that need to be maintained through, you know, cleaning out, you know, we want to make sure that that happens. But it also has to be done in the context of whatever is required by the state or federal government. So the county, if the county has.
Cause growth creek.
There we go. You know, to the degree that the county can go in there and work in that, we also have to be within the permitting authority of the state. We can't just do it on our own.
Have we been able to get permits to do that?
I don't know. I know there was an issue a number of years ago where this.
It exists right now.
Yeah, and it's existing now, will continue to exist. We've got a flooding problem down there. And that's one of several places in the county where there is a potential flooding problem. And to the degree that we can minimize flooding by doing work within that floodway, then we should be able to do that. But it's not going to void our requirement to get a permit from the state. If the county's going to do the work, then the county needs to get a permit. If the individual private property owner wants to do work with industry embed, they need to get a permit.
Okay, is there justification underwater resources, goals and policies, to write a goal of creating, with, gaining approval from the appropriate authorities for the county's ongoing ability to maintain flow on particular creeks? So you get it once and you got it forever?
Well, I don't know. I mean, we could put policy language in there that basically directs the county to work with the state to assist in that. And I think it belongs in the safety element when we talk about flooding.
Okay.
And I'll make a note of that.
Please.
To, look at that when we get to that part. But, you know, we can't circumvent the state or federal process.
Right, but I just, I think it would be helpful, because it's an ongoing problem. Stuff grows up so fast, you can whack it down and it just right back again. If we could have a policy that, an implementation measure that actually worked, that would solve the cause group out of where else in the county we have similar problems, but that's a big one right there.
C S A 1. Natural C S A 1 had a problem.
On what river, on what water body?
Okay, so we get back to this here.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So we'll.
I think that would be a worthwhile goal of chasing that for, in this general plan.
All right. The other comment was by Mr. Race was the addition of animals to, I think, which was COS 2.8, so invasive plant and animal species.
Yes.
Is that good with the commission? Okay. And then Muriel Zeller was wondering about other examples that we might use as implementation for land conservation if we're not considering easements. And Colleen added to that, like permanent conservation. I don't, I don't know.
Well, the only ones that are permanent that I know of are conservation easements, and that's the big problem with them.
And the comment that was made, I think by Ms. Zeller, seconded by Ms. Platt, was, had to do with Ms. Zeller's suggestion that we were eliminating conservation easement. So that's not the word that she used, prohibit them or do something. And we're doing nothing of the kind, as I understand it. They are, they exist as a matter of state law. They can be implemented, taken advantage of, et cetera, by property owners according to whatever the state law says. And we're not saying you can't do it in the county of Calaveras, and we couldn't if we wanted to.
I guess her point is that we're just, we're not supporting them as a tool.
We're just saying, go forth if that's what you want to do, but it's not an encourage, you're not going forth with any certain blessing from the county or encouragement from the county. Do it, take it, do it if you want to do it and you're qualified to do it, but we're out of it.
That's what I understand the intent of the commission is.
It doesn't change anybody's property rights.
That's the way the current law is, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so then the other, so I guess the answer is? I don't know what the answer is. That we're not supporting them, but they're available.
We're just eliminating 2.7, as far as I know.
So the next comment was from Tanya Douse about the identifying wildlife corridors. And I think.
Madam Chair, there was a second part to my question.
Can you hold on one second, Muriel? In fact, let me just finish this and we'll get back to you. Because I only got one part of your question. But let's just go on to Tanya's, and that was identifying wildlife corridors and is someone going to count every plant on private property?
Any kind of identification of wildlife corridors would be done, you know, based on existing knowledge, remote sensing, you know, looking at vegetation types.
Remote sensing?
Using, you know, aerial photography to identify plant types, you know, where stream corridors are, existing mapped areas, information that is already available out there, we're certainly not, I have no intention, and I don't think there's any desire to, you know, do that level of analysis to identify. I mean, we're looking at a broad brush kind of look of, here is where, you know, certain animal species that are deemed important are, and here's, you know, looking at maps of where, and then they would only apply when someone comes in for development. You know, it wouldn't be something where we'd say, oh, you, you know, you can't use your property. Obviously, we would not do that.
It would be triggering like CEQA review.
Yeah, so if someone came in with a project and we identified, oh, here's an area that is, you know, right now, the county, the state already has mapped deer migration corridors. So that's something we look at when a project comes in that's within one of those areas. Oh, here's a deer migration corridor. How does this development affect that? And maybe you need to have greater separation between the lots. So you cluster it and you allow those, you know, those are the kind of things we'd be looking at.
Okay.
Not a mapping and restriction type of practice.
You have to understand what a deer migration corridor is apart from, in my neighborhood, they cross the street everywhere they want to. But there are some areas where.
It's more of where we have migratory deer herds that move as, you know, seasonally.
Like in mountain ranches or?
During the summertime, they're up in the high country and then they migrate down to lower area. Now you have, also you have a season, you have year-round deer population.
Those aren't the resident deer that we have in my neighborhood.
I don't know, but most likely, you know, there's certain areas, and primarily it's from the high country to mid-range, maybe, you know, 3,000 feet, that the state has identified, however they've done that, that these are important corridors and we don't want to block that because that's going to really disrupt the deer herd. For whatever reason, that's been deemed important by the state. So there are other where we get to, you know, endangered animals that, you know, there are migratory patterns or movement patterns that are necessary to protect that aspect of wildlife. And that's what we'd be looking at. We certainly wouldn't be on a lot by lot, you know, counting plants, counting animals on that basis, broad scale. And then it would be applied at the development stage, say, oh, here's, just like we already have some of these areas where the listed species are now, when someone comes in with a project and that, we've got to look at that. We've got to determine how is your project going to impact that, do a biological analysis, you know, and then perhaps modify the project to accommodate that.
Well, if that's the case, if this comes up when you have a project and you have to have a CEQA analysis and so forth, then why are we trying to establish guidelines in advance? Because every site's going to be different. If you look at the implementation measure COS-2E, that's what it seems to be talking about. Why is this necessary? Because every site's going to be different. You know, the rare wood flat deer herd, maybe there's 15 deer left in it, I don't know. Not many.
Yeah. The benefit of having mitigation programs identified in advance, it enables the applicant to plan for, when they're developing their project, they know the county has a mitigation program in place that enables them to systematically participate in that. It simplifies the process, creates more of a consistent county-wide approach to impact the wildlife rather than case by case. I would say that most developers would prefer to have a more of a county-wide mitigation program than have to deal with it on a case by case basis, particularly a smaller scale development. In some cases, it might be, we've identified areas that are high-quality habitat for some reason. And so let's use resources to acquire that from willing sellers, to protect that, and then let the areas that aren't, you know, maybe they have some impact, but it's less valuable habitat. And so by, sort of buying into that high-quality habitat, that's the mitigation for the loss of the less, higher, the lower quality habitat. That's a very common way to approach those kinds of issues.
But this implementation measure is not mitigation at all.
And which one are you talking about, Kelly?
2E. It's the only one that ties to this deer corridor business. The others deals with salamanders and stuff.
For whatever reason, the state has determined that deer corridors are important. It probably goes back to the long-term mission of the former Department of Fish and Game where they were focused on game animals. And deer was the primary game species that fishing game, they have evolved over time to now Department of Fish and Wildlife looking at a broader perspective of the wildlife of the state. We could modify that so it's not just referring to deer movement corridors, but wildlife movement corridors is one option, if that's a concern. I'm not really sure what the concern is.
Excuse me, I understand the mitigation point, but that's not what's going on here. Even if you broaden this to include other wildlife other than deer, of which there's not that much that's important, you're still not talking mitigation. You're talking about protecting movement corridors, et cetera. I think those are site-specific. I don't see how you would do guidelines, and I don't know why you'd want to spend the money to try on a county-wide basis. You do have your migratory deer herds, but, you know, they don't all go down the same trail either, okay? When somebody comes up with a development or whatever they want to do in that country, seems to me that's the time you look at it. What are they proposing? What is the actual movement of wildlife there? Then you figure out what to do. To me, to try to come up with guidelines in advance that's going to cover all these situations is not a good way to go. And actually, I think I'd be in favor of getting rid of the policy on identifying these corridors, because I don't see where it's going to do any good. And the fact of the matter is, other than the migratory deer herd, the biggest problem you have on deer movement is deer crossing highways, getting hit on Caltrans roads. And that's really a Caltrans issue. As soon as they make a big highway out of something, the deer start dying on the road. And I don't know that we can do anything about that.
2C is the mitigation practices you were just discussing, right, Peter? You got, that's a mitigation bank type of effect.
I was looking at 2C and 2E together.
Okay, but Mr. Rooster's point is when it comes to a corridor, you can't bank that. You can't buy corridor banking, sort of credits, to account for a taking over here on 2D or 2E.
Yeah, and I was looking, you know, we're on the policies and the implementation measures for 2.5 are both 2C and 2E. So that's why we're sort of conflating those two. 2E is specifically about corridors and specifically about deer.
And it's applicable to discretionary projects only, is 2E?
Not necessarily. I mean, basically what this says is we will work with the state to come up with guidelines for, and it could be voluntary guideline, someone's putting in fencing on their property. What kind of fencing is, provides security, maybe there's, you know, ways that wildlife can get through certain kind of fencing, unless, of course, it's fencing to keep the wildlife out. And, you know, obviously, you know, that wouldn't be the case, you know, deer fencing for a vineyard or something like that. But, so, standards that we could provide either voluntarily or when someone comes in with a development project, we could apply as conditions that would facilitate the continued movement of wildlife. And to have them in place already rather than to try to create them each time. So if here's, you know, acceptable. So if here's, you know, acceptable design standard for, I'm just looking at some of these things, you know, how would you design setback or parcel sizes for areas that are, you know, clear, you know, within a certain corridor? And this sort of gets back then to the land use, it, it all ties back together with land use map and minimum parcel sizes. If we are, if we identified a, you know, a migratory deer corridor, do we want to put high-density residential within that area, or do we keep it more as a, you know, rural residential, parcel size minimum five or 10, or whatever it is that facilitates, you know, wildlife movement?
Okay.
That's sort of the bigger picture.
Okay, but 2E says that it's to be applied in conjunction with environmental reviews for discretionary projects.
Right.
Yes, right, it does say that.
Okay. So-
So depending on the direction you, you would want to go with this, we could either expand that to be broader, or we could reduce it so that it's, I, I'm not sure what, what direction that you, the commission, want to go with this mitigation measure and how it relates back to the policy.
It's not a mitigation measure.
Well, it's not a mitigation measure, it's an implementation measure. It's an implementation measure that will probably end up being a potential mitigation measure when we do the EIR.
And the measure is to establish guidelines.
I, I mean, I, I see it as a, a mitigation-type measure.
Yes.
If you, if you look at it this way, and, and you give the example, you've got a major deer highway, and someone wants to put a project in there that's going to potentially block it. Well, what kind of project would block it? Well, a high-density project would block it, a shopping center would block it, high-density residential, that, that would block it, but, and that would be a discretionary project, because it's not zoned for high-density now. So you could say, sorry, that's not the place for your project, because there's the deer highway there. We've got to stay with our half-acre minimums, or whatever was already there. Or, you can cluster, you can stick your, your density up on this slope here and let the deer have this pathway down below.
So then what would be the minimum width required?
I don't know.
That would be something we could come up with a standard. We would look at this again, and we-
That's efficient game.
Our studies show that 100-foot-wide corridor is sufficient to allow free movement without, you know, interfering, you know, animals' lights, that kind of stuff that might-
I, I remember this was a big furball when we were talking about the Sawmill project. There was the discussion of the critter corridor, and it was, I don't know how wide the thing was, it was like 200 feet or something like that, and it was like crazy, you're talking, and, and the critters they were talking about were turtles, and, I don't know, skunks and whatnot. But, so, yeah, how, how are those numbers arrived at? Does Fish and Game have a number? Hey, when you've got a, when you've got a herd of deer, of two dozen, they, they need this much space, I mean, how does that happen?
So the idea would be, we would work with the state to come up with what's a reasonable standard, and then you say, okay, here's our standard, the county adopts it, and so then when the developer comes in and says, I'm looking at designing this project, what are your guys' standards for wildlife corridors? It's X number of feet, whatever it is. Okay, cool, I can, I can, I can design my project knowing that, it's not a guessing game. I'm going to propose 100, but, oh, gee, the county wants 200. Or, I'm going to propose 300, but all I really need to put 50 feet. I, I don't know what that is, but that's the whole point of having these standards in place, so that when people come to us early on in the process, and they say, well, I know we've got these issues, do you have any standards I can do, I can use to meet the county's requirements and provide sufficient mitigation? Boom, here it is.
What I see as the bigger issue is knowing where these sensitive habitats are now, so that somebody can't come by later and say, oh, that project I don't like, I've seen deer cross that street many times, and I'm going to say that's a deer corridor. So are these corridors established? Are they mapped right now so that we can put the map in our background report and say, that's the map we're, we're relying on when it comes to anything that's going to require the implementation of, or that's going to trigger this implementation measure, or this, the, the effect of this implementation measure. It's going to be triggered, this requirement is a better way to put it. Or do those maps exist now?
I believe they do.
Okay, so there's no, nobody can say, nobody can reinvent the critter corridor map for their purposes downstream, later on?
The agencies responsible for the management of wildlife may modify those maps as they do additional analysis, they find, oh, gee, it's, it's shifted. But today's snapshot in time, that's what it would be. And unless we've got something, some new information, additional studies that were done that shows, oh, the corridor is actually over here and not there, you know, it could change. But it's only going to change based on new scientific analysis.
Okay, so you made the note about the background report, that's going to, that's going to include a critter corridor map, whatever the state has that they can give us, right? And then-
Hello? How do you?
Am I interrupting you?
Thank you.
The, so, back to... 2.5, is that what we're still looking at?
Yes.
Okay. With that in mind, I don't have a problem with 2.5 and the implementation measures, as I hear them now explained, and we, we refine them a little bit.
Okay.
I think I'd like to hear from the public on 2E, because I'm not convinced that you can have one-size-fits-all guidelines when you're talking about where deer are going to go.
I think we already heard from the public on this, and maybe what we should do is that this just, are there other commissioners that want-
Well, we haven't really discussed the mitigation program.
We haven't got-
And, you know, there's sort of, we're back and forth between the policies, and which makes sense, because that's how we implement it.
Okay.
But we, we haven't had public comment on that specific-
Okay, good point.
Kelly, is your, is your issue with 2E that it's, it's not possible to come up with a, a plan of action, because you can't determine the sizes of these, the requirements to meet these guidelines? Because as I understand it, that's not what was contemplated necessarily.
Well, you're talking about guidelines that would presumably apply across the board, and my problem is that deer corridors is kind of a loose term. They don't all go down the same trail, okay? And the terrain is always different that they're traveling. Some of them like to travel original, some don't, depends on where you are. Depends on whether the corridor changes over time, because maybe SPI did some logging up above, and the deer like it up there, and that's where they're coming from. Could be the old corridor they used to use is full of brush, and they can't get through it, so they've got to go a different way. My point is that I think this is better left to a site-specific determination, but I'm, other than having been around here for a long time, I'm not really an expert on it, and I'd like to hear from the public on what they think on 2E, which we have not gotten to on public comment yet.
You were about to address the, the possibilities that come out of 2E in terms of a, a document or an approach, or maybe I'm mistaken, it looked like you had... No? Okay. Mr. Rooster's point is well-taken, that, that the movement of these animals is very fluid, and it depends on various conditions, growth of plant life and other habitat issues and whatnot, and, and maybe there are, there are no clear highways to avoid, or to, or to design around.
I know that the maps that the state have prepared, these are the ones that I've seen in other jurisdictions, are very broad-brush. They're sort of, you know, big arrows, sort of go this way, and they're, you know, maybe a, a mile or two wide, during, you know, it's in this general area that the movement occurs for deer. And I think that, you know, it's not like it's a one-size-fits-all, it's going to vary depending on, you know, topography and vegetation type and all that. I think you could come up with a range of standards to say, if you've got this situation, here's what we recommend, if you've got this situation, here's what we recommend. It's certainly not going to be, boom, here's what you have to do in every case and every situation. It, it will vary from project to project. But to the degree that we can provide guidance in developing that upfront, it's helpful. It, it reduces the processing time, and it provides some sense of security for an applicant to know, here are the things I'm going to be looking at as I'm designing my project. And that, to me, that's beneficial.
With these corridors being so wide, as you just described, that potentially locks up a lot of land that has to, where you have to consider them. Whereas, and I'm no wildlife expert either, but I know that if you build a fence that the deer can't jump over, they go around it. They just change their corridor-
Right.
-to whatever's available to them, to get where they want to go. So within this corridor that's very, very wide on the state's map, and, and development starts to happen, and it starts to pinch off the corridor, would the county then have a provision saying, okay, we're down to the point where we're, if we go any further, we're going to block?
It could lead to that, yes.
Okay, so now is where we, we've got to take measures where there's, there's, there's space between buildings, between lots, that the deer can go through. So would that be part of how, how a 2E would be written?
That, that could be a component of that, yes.
So it doesn't really matter, David, because those maps are already pre-done. That area is defined, whether it's in our general plan pointing it out or not. If somebody goes to build that project, at that point in time, Fish and Game, the state, whoever you want, is going to weigh in on that particular area. I, I can tell you from living up in the high country that they do have a path that they generally take, it is a wide path, but if something disturbs their path, whether it be, you know, there's people camping out there, they're doing their horseback riding there, whatever it is that they're doing, they will take a different path, and it is going to drive them out onto our highway. Our highways are seriously overgrown, so you don't see a deer step out in front of you anymore, it's just in front of you, and you're going to hit it. So I say we do everything we can to mitigate keeping them on their path, Peter being able to have something in writing that gives him a tool to work with, because whether we have it in our plan or we don't, the state already has a map for it, it is predefined.
Okay, and when it comes to a discretionary project, which this is aimed at-
Right.
-and they go through their EIR, Fish and Game is going to say, that's a corridor issue-
Yes.
-they're going to step in, they're going to require something.
Absolutely.
Right? Now, how do we, who get, you know, who, who has the authority there? Fish and Game's going to have its shot at it, and then the county also? Or what do we do? We turn it over to Fish and Game? How does that happen?
We typically would, would provide, or an applicant would hire a consultant to look at what, what, how do I mitigate the impacts? We would then say, that makes sense, it's routed to Fish and Game, Fish and Wildlife, and they'd say, yeah, we concur with that. That's sort of the ideal situation. In some cases, it's sort of a back and forth, we've got to sort of negotiate with them, no, 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 that's not sufficient, well, what is sufficient? But to the degree that we upfront sort of identify, here is what's acceptable, it makes it that much easier. So we get to that smooth process of reviewing the projects upfront.
It also is going to give somebody looking at buying property to do development-
Gives them a heads up.
It gives them a point of disclosure to look at that map and say, well, maybe that's not the best place for me to buy, and I need to buy over here, because I don't want to go through that process.
Right.
So the disclosure part of it, I think, is important, I think, I mean, I like deer, so I, I want to do what we can to keep them on their path and not on the roadways that we built in their little countryside, so I'm, I'm for leaving it in.
I'm for leaving it in, given that I think 2E can be designed with these, along the lines of what I've discussed, and I understand the process better now.
Okay.
But we haven't heard from everybody.
No? No, we haven't gotten to that part yet. But there was one, I did promise Muriel that you had a, I missed part of your...
She wanted to know about what you were going to do to allow for open space that was going to be permanent. That was the second part of your question that you were asking.
Because I thought I asked that, or mentioned that.
You did.
I asked for examples of how open space would be protected and preserved, given that the open space preservation plan is going to remain silent on the issue of conservation easements, which are the most common and widely recognized form of open space preservation and protection. So if you're going to be relying on the Williamson Act and the Right to Farm Ordinance, I think you're going to need a little more than that to make the, the plan legally defensible.
Okay, thank you.
But they can still do conservation easements.
Well, I think that, that was the response by the, the commission, is that it's not eliminating conservation easements, they're just not encouraging them. They're not listing it as, as an example, just, they're not listing anything as an example.
And, and I think that's going to be the, the problem.
It could be.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I say something? Sir?
Sure.
Corridors have to be for all of us, too.
Quickly, you could say something quickly.
Well, I, I think this is a very important subject right now, and maybe it can't be all that quick, but, but what I would like to, to say, we've been talking about the deer and places for them to go. We're talking about protection of oakwoodlands and wildlife habitat, wetland areas, and it's been mostly negative about conservation easements. In 2.7, we're talking about voluntary conservation easements. But we've also kind of come to the realization, perhaps, that these conservation easements can be good tools for people who are developers when they look at a project. And so my proposal would be, as kind of a compromise on 2.7, even though we've already voted to delete it, but still, perhaps reconsider, and say something like, support the concept of conservation easements to mitigate the effects of development on wetland areas, wildlife habitat, and oakwoodlands. And this would be so that developers and conservationists could have a common meeting grounds, and we could have some kind of consensus where we'll have a tool, and we'll have, so that developers will have a tool, and so, and that conservationists will have a means of protecting the things that are dear to them.
And so again, your, your proposed language, Kevin, was support the concept?
Support the concept of conservation easements to mitigate the effects of development on wetlands, oakwoodlands, and wildlife habitat.
You're not really changing 2.7?
Yes.
Yes, he is, because he's talking about adding it as to mitigate it.
And that way, if you needed a wildlife corridor or deer-
So if they needed to do it, they can mitigate it in.
So it's, would get rid of the idea of a voluntary establishment, and it would become a tool for developers able to be able to use it.
It already is.
It, it's a, it's a tool for, for a developer only by agreement with the owner of the easement. The owner, the person can, can establish the easement and not, not-
Not the-
Not sell it to the developer, not sell the, not sell, not sell shares to the developer for purposes of, of mitigating his problem at his end.
Developers.
How do you know when you've, when you've, when you've established a conservation easement in a wetland, that that's what it's going to be used for, as, as a banking mechanism for development?
Well, that would be for somebody with more expertise than, than I to figure out, but I think maybe they would happen more concurrently, that the developer would look around for places where he could, where they had come to an agreement for something like that.
What are you thinking?
Anyway.
Thank you.
Okay.
So is there any, the-
So, is there any discussion by the commission to rethink 2.7?
Yeah, I want to re-discuss it. I want to hear from Peter what he would think about adding it as a mitigation for conservation easements.
Or it's a policy.
The major change on the policy would be that it applies to mitigation of impacts from development as opposed to a more general statement of supporting conservation easements to protect the.
Just open the.
So, it, so it's more specific, more narrowly focused towards impacts from development. You know, it's, I don't have a problem with the language, modify it somewhat from what Kevin has suggested, but, you know, the concept is fine with me. I was fine with the original version, so, you know, it's, it's. Hear from the rest of the commission.
Well, sir, I'm, I'm in support of the original version. I'm in support of any version that includes conservation easements. Ted?
I think we, either we've got to get rid of the place where we're in favor of conservation easements or not. We're kind of, we're teetering back and forth. And I think we've got to do one way or other.
Which way do you want to go?
I'm bothered by conservation easements because of their long-term. People who create those now are creating things for their great grandchildren that aren't even born yet. I'm not sure that's good.
So, are shopping malls and subdivisions. So?
Obviously, I'm not a supporter of conservation easements either, but I think with the, I, I, the whole point of doing this general plan is to help our planning department as well as our county and people coming into our county be able to move forward with knowing what our county is going to want and expect from them. And it would make it easier for the planning department, whether it be today or 10 years from now, to have something in, in line there that tells them what needs to be done and move it forward. Whether we leave this in there as voluntary or we, we leave it out, it's still the same thing. You're either volunteering, they can do it as voluntary, we're not saying they have to do it, or we can take it out and they just know that, hey, that's an option for them. It, it just gives direction to the planning department saying that you can voluntarily do this if you want, but you don't have to. I, I don't, I don't know how it's going to change anything, Peter. Help me out with this. Because if it says it's voluntary, it is whether it's in here or not, right?
Well, you're also assuming that people know. It's a way to give people, you know, give them knowledge of an option.
Well, anybody.
And that this county is, you know, is like, you know, has that available, just like every other place does. But it's, it's informative too.
In what, okay, so who's going to want to do a voluntary conservation easement if they're coming in to do a development?
That's not how it works. Maybe I'm misunderstanding you. What Kevin is saying is conservation easements, when it comes to things like wetlands, for example, is a tool that a developer can use, that can benefit a developer. If he's got a little bitty wetland that's preventing his, his project from going forward, he can build on that wetland if he's bought the space over on somebody's conservation easement. He bought credits in an existing, very large conservation easement that's all wetland, or mostly wetland. He, they can bank that, they can do that. We've talked about the banking concept. My question, and I, that, that's fine, but my question is, can't that happen anyway? Isn't that part of, doesn't that happen anyway?
If it's voluntary, they can do it if they want.
No, I, I think that the, the term voluntary applies more to the property owner on which the easement is established. That's voluntary. We're not going to force someone to say, your property is going to be where the conservation easement is. It's not voluntary for a developer who has to mitigate the impact. And the establishment of a conservation easement somewhere else is one method to do that. I'm not sure, I'm, I'm unaware of other, you know, conservation mitigation measures other than onsite mitigation in, in those circumstances. But maybe the, the word, if, if you're interested in Kevin's suggestion, maybe the word support is where we're getting hung up. And I'm saying maybe an alternative would be conservation easements are acceptable means to mitigate impacts to wildlife habitat, wetland areas, and oak woodlands. But variation on the theme, but it, it maybe gets away from supporting it to the point, we'll accept it. And it, but it does put it out there. We're getting to, to what your, your concerns were.
That's better.
And my question on that same, on that exact point is whether or not we say that they're acceptable, they are.
Right.
That's the, that's it. The, the developer can go to a person who's got a conservation easement on a wetland. He's got, he can say, how'd you like to sell a piece of that wetland? Fine, they negotiate a price, county's not involved in that transaction, and they go about their merry way. Developer comes to you and say, I've got my wetland problem taken care of.
We could say, I don't think we would, but we could say, no, it's not acceptable. The only way to mitigate is onsite. You will avoid. That is the county's policy. The only means of mitigating is avoidance. I don't think that's what we want to do. I'm, I'm saying, as a, as a county policy, we could say, we're not accepting conservation easements. We're not saying that. We're just not saying the reverses. We want conservation easements. What I'm hearing you saying is, it's okay. If they want to do that, that's up to them. But it's not the county's business to tell them how they're going to mitigate. A county could do that. And you, we could be as strict or as, as fluid as, as we want to be.
We would have to proactively say, we accept this as a mitigation measure.
Well, we have to do that anyway. With every project, when they propose a mitigation measure, we look at and says, yes, we believe that adequately mitigates the, the impact and we're going to accept that as a condition of approval and mitigation.
On a project by project basis.
Project by project.
But by doing it this way, someone knows in advance the county is okay with this concept.
Yes, yes.
And that's the advantage you're talking about?
Yeah, gives them a heads up.
Well, could there be some projects where you would say, no, a conservation easement on somebody else's property is not acceptable mitigation for this project. We think you should do something here on the site and here's what we think you should do.
We could.
All right, now, if you, if you lay down a general policy that says, hail or high water, you can destroy whatever you want, however you want to do it, as long as you quote mitigate by locking up some other ground, then you have lost that option, haven't you?
Yeah.
So, what was your proposed change?
Well.
I mean, as an alternative, I mean, how did it start?
And this really gets to what Kelly was just saying, that what I thought might be acceptable language is conservation easements are acceptable means to mitigate.
So, you could say are generally acceptable. I mean, just gives you an out.
And if we get into an environmental review process and, you know, an agency is saying, you know, no, the only way to mitigate, the only way that, you know, you, you cannot wipe out that wetland or that habitat. You know, that's going to override.
Right.
That could happen.
That, that could happen.
Doesn't matter what we say we like or don't like.
Yeah. If it's red-legged frog habitat and we don't have any other plant in place.
It's really a juicy spot and we're not going to let you.
Yeah. Or there's, you know, some rare plant that's out there that, you know, is so, so rare that, you know, we just now discovered it, we don't know it's there, and that's the only place it, it exists. Yeah, it's going to, we're going to have to avoid it, so.
So, can you finish reading what you were reading? I didn't.
Conservation easements are acceptable means to mitigate impacts from development to wildlife habitat, wetland areas, and oak woodlands.
Then I would add generally acceptable.
I'm okay with that.
Where does that get us?
It gives developers a heads up. It gives people a heads up that this is a.
You think the developers don't know about this?
I don't know, Kelly. I can't assume that, I can't assume that everybody is, you know.
Or are we potentially leading them astray? Oh, conservation easement, that's a good mitigation measure, I'm going to go in that direction. And they find out, oh, I'm sorry, on your particular project, no, it's not going to work. That's why I'm asking, where does it get us? Does it really get you anything? Or is it just a sort of a, a policy statement, we're, we're okay with it under everything else being equal?
I think we leave it to the people that do the studies.
It's not one of those mandatory fundamental or specific policies, it's a general policy that says, in general, we're okay with that. It doesn't, you know, commit the county or applicant to anything specific. So, does it get us anything, you know, specifically? No. Does it paint the larger picture that typically this is, you know, yes, that, I mean, it's, it's in that realm.
If the more general version of your statement, of your proposed language would be, the county may accept conservation easement.
That actually says something different. That says, we're going to accept the easement, and I'm not sure we're going to.
No, not easement, I mean, may accept.
Conservation easement as mitigation.
As mitigation measure, may accept. That doesn't tell the developer, I'm good or I'm not good. It just says it's a possibility.
So, where are we on this?
I don't know.
I guess the options are, we eliminate language altogether.
Which we've already eliminated, right.
And leave it up to project by project analysis. We say we actually want them and support them, or we've got something sort of in the middle that says, yes, we may accept those.
As mitigation.
But it's going to depend. Your call.
Well, I'm supportive of putting back in, in any form, and we're back to this, so.
I was looking at the state requirements. Whether or without it, it looks like we're meeting the requirements because we're, we're still putting forward implementations on the open space and conservation. I don't, you know, when we were working on the resource element, the same issue came up where we had one where it was, is it in, is it out? And I was, well, why can't we just leave the word in just so people know it's there? And then I didn't feel like I had any support on it. I kind of think there's nothing wrong with at least letting people know it's available. As long as it doesn't say they have to do it, I would be okay with it.
As long as it doesn't say they have to do it or the county has to accept it.
And I guess my position is it has to justify its existence a little bit more than that. And I don't, I don't see it.
I don't either.
All right, so we've got two, you know, eliminate it. I'm for keeping it even modified. Lisa, Ted, it's up to you.
Well, I said, it's fine either way, as long as, as long as it's plain that they can use it or not use it and the county can accept it or not accept it.
Okay, so it sounds like we've got three votes for leaving, for having a back in.
I liked the.
The modified back in.
Conservation easements may be, may be acceptable means to mitigate impacts to wildlife habitat.
Okay. Yeah?
Majority for that?
Yeah, we've got three.
Okay.
Right, we got three?
Yeah, it may be a means, but you better make sure you put right behind that. And if you choose to do that, get ready to do environmental reports. It'll take you five years.
Going to have to do those anyway.
All right, so, shall we take a short break?
Yes.
And then. Yeah, all right, so, but one thing though, before we, well, go ahead, Peter.
Okay, so, policy COS 2.7 reads.
Is back in.
Conservation easements may be acceptable means to mitigate impacts to wildlife habitat, wetland areas, and oak woodlands.
Okay. So, let's take a 10-minute break till 3:25 and then I just want to let you know that we will be adjourning today at 5 o'clock. So, I'm just setting all your expectations, so. Oh, I know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't sit like, I wouldn't sit like that. All right, so we are reconvene. Welcome back. And we are now on goals and policies, air quality slash greenhouse gases. Comments, suggestions, concerns? Whoever wants to jump in?
All right, just a second. What page is that again?
It's page 14.
Yes. I can start out if you'd like. On the goals, my question is, why do we need both? Isn't 3A enough? Can put a period after standards in 3A because we cannot ensure any of it in so much as it's not our air, so to speak. We cannot ensure, we, we cannot comply with the rest of that sentence in 3A.
Wouldn't have a choice in 3A. That's state and federal standards.
Well, I think what Commissioner Tino's suggesting is the latter part of that, after standards, that we can't ensure it.
No, but we could, we could say that.
Because there's another word other than insure.
Right, that contributes to the health and safety and maintains the quality of life.
I can go with that.
We don't have to ensure it, but we can contribute to it. That's why we're doing it.
We can't guarantee anybody they're going to get healthier.
I'm guaranteed we're all going to get older, though.
Yeah, that's, we can do that.
Yes.
On 3, I'm, I'm good with the fix that Fawn suggested. On 3B, associated with vehicular traffic, electric power generation, and energy use in compliance with applicable state goals and standards. The vehicular traffic, vehicular travel, the only thing we can do is try to have an efficient road system that tries to, attempts to limit the, you know, miles or reduce the miles that people travel vehicular, by, by vehicle. Electric power generation, I don't think we have any greenhouse gas emissions from power generation in the county, do we?
Well, I think what that's getting at is some of the goals and measures in there talk about small-scale power generation, solar power, wind power, that we can contribute to the reduction of, and there's also a lot of hydroelectric power. All of those are non-greenhouse gas emitting, electric power generating facilities. And so, through county policies, we could encourage more of that, which then reduces elsewhere.
It reduces it elsewhere, is what it does.
Yeah.
You understand, it doesn't, it doesn't replace anything that's happening in the county because nothing else is happening in the county.
I had a lot of people beating on my knotty pine trying to get us to allow somebody to build a power plant because we're at the upper end, got a six-inch high pressure gas line.
Oh, you mean a peak plant? You mean a peak plant?
Well, something of that sort, yeah. I mean, so that's been, and not, not today because it's not available, but there were people who.
Well, even a natural gas plant, if it's replacing power in the grid from, from an oil plant, let's say, in the, in the Bay Area, if that's what it's doing, that's a reduction. But we understand, if, if we're doing those kinds of things here, we're not affecting our air quality. We're, we're replacing it somewhere.
But again, the whole cost of the greenhouse gas stuff is.
We're contributing to the global issue. Okay, well, in.
What's in itself is probably worth a mile if it makes it better.
That's all I had on the, on the first two.
Does anyone else have anything on the goals?
Okay with me.
Okay, all right, so I, we just had the one change of contributes to, right? And it eliminates insure.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so moving on to the policies.
Under 3.2, new development shall separate and/or buffer sensitive receptors from harmful air emission sources. Give me an example of that.
You could have an industrial plant that is using some type of localized air quality impact as some of the things that Air Quality Control District looks at, that we want to make sure that, you know, that we wanna make sure that, you know, there's some, you know, separation between incompatible uses.
Like a childcare center, for example.
Yeah, some, or a hospital maybe, you know, whatever it is, that would have.
They have people that can be easily compromised by poor air.
Well, that relates to my question, is sensitive receptors, as I recall from, I think it was the housing element, is a specific list of, of people.
Yes.
It is children in schools.
Children, the elderly.
Elderly in facilities for the elderly.
Right.
Because the residents of individual homes change, you can't.
And I think the, the most recent place it was, sensitive decept, receptors were defined was in, when we were talking about the cannabis dispensaries. Because they're subject to sensitive receptors, right?
That's a little different context.
Not on greenhouse gases, though.
No, I'm just saying that, that, I don't know if it's the same list of sensitive receptors.
Well, there's a list on page seven.
Okay.
Second paragraph under air quality slash greenhouse gases, last sentence.
Right, so.
Children, elderly, acutely, chronically ill. So they would be daycare centers, schools.
But, but that maybe, Kelly may have done us a big favor in pointing out this particular paragraph, because the sensitive receptors, my understanding is that it, it's associated with a facility. And so it can't be just, in, just, just children, elderly, acutely ill, chronically ill. It has to be those individuals associated with the particular facility. In the case of children, a school. In the case of all the other three, it's a, it's a facility that's, that they're, that they live in for treatment.
Right.
So maybe under 3.2, we wanna add buffer facilities, housing sensitive receptors.
Right, so it says, yeah. Sensitive receptors include residences, schools, playgrounds.
Correct, thank you. Facilities occupied by these populations are considered sensitive receptors. So that's taken care of on that paragraph.
Are you saying in Calaveras County, sensitive receptors?
Yes, it's the same thing.
Right, residences.
Oh, no, no, no. Playgrounds, meaning, I thought that meant schools. Playgrounds, so, school playgrounds.
It could be a park.
It could be a park also?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that sentence includes residences.
Includes residences, which is, which is a problem then, because how can you control that?
Well, again, we're talking about new development, someone's proposing to rezone property to industrial, or they're proposing a conditional use permit that has, you know, use of some kind of toxic chemical, and the, you said, no, that's inappropriate location, it's right next to a residential subdivision. Or it's, you know, next to a daycare center, or something like that.
So, but in this case, it would be next to a neighborhood?
It could be. And again, it's, the policy would be that you'd separate your buffer in some way, depending on the nature of the use, the type of air pollutant that's, that's being emitted, and the type of sensitive receptor.
Then it's not just new development, it's particular kinds of new development.
Well, it's, it's new development that is going to.
From harmful air emission sources.
Right, from air, right.
So, you know, transversally, you wouldn't put a residential subdivision next to a, a power plant, or something like that.
So.
So I'm okay with that, because.
You don't think that you need to be more specific with respect to new development?
No, I don't think so.
I don't either, I'm fine with it.
Well, it cuts both ways, the way it's written, doesn't it? The new development could be generating the greenhouse gases or whatever.
Open a hospital next to an industrial zone.
Right, or they could be receiving them.
Right.
Either way, it's saying, separate or buffer.
Right.
So it covers both sides of it.
Right.
Okay.
Properly so, I think.
Right, I agree.
I don't have anything until 3.4, and that's just a question.
I have 3.5, so go ahead.
And my question on 3.4 is, where are the 1990 emission levels? Are they in the background reports to be referred to?
He said he was gonna talk to air pollution and get more information.
Okay. And then I have a 3.5 that somebody else said.
Well, on 3.4, is achieving year 1990 emission levels by the year 2020. Is that something state law requires?
That's the target under state law, and I believe those are statewide targets, not individual counties. So that's the, that is, that is the goal under, I guess it's 8032. That says, we're gonna reduce our greenhouse gas emissions back down to 1990 levels, by 2020.
So, so we're contributing to the state's goal.
Yes.
However we can, within reason, it's not a county goal. It's not a, it's not a mandated county goal.
It becomes a county policy that we're gonna contribute to meeting that statewide goal.
We already did, we've lost 20,000 people in the county.
That's how we're gonna go about doing this. Keep driving them away. Okay, go ahead, on 3.5.
3.5, encourage retention and expansion of vegetation cover consistent with fire protection needs. Kinda goes against 4291, in the California code, of expansion of vegetation coverage. I need more clarity on that one, because we're cutting vegetation out left and right to comply with the resource code.
Well, that, that was why I added the phrase, consistent with fire protection needs. So areas where, houses, roads, you know, facilities, you know, don't exist, then let's retain that vegetative cover, because that provides a greenhouse gas sink, and, you know, helps, you know, helps with meeting those targets. Clearly, where we have clearing requirements for safe ingress and egress, and protection of structures, we want that, we want that cleared consistent with those requirements.
That's, that's, that takes precedent.
Yes.
Still struggling with this, I mean, we, we are so overgrown in this county, that it's unbelievable, and it hasn't been maintained. To encourage retention and expansion of vegetative cover is asking for more fires. I, I don't, I don't like that one at all.
And I don't like it for similar reasons, I have some verbiage to that effect.
Well, I have some questions about it.
Good, let's ask.
Does vegetative cover include grass?
Yes.
Okay, where in this county do we have bare dirt, other than where the fires have burned things up?
We don't.
That we're gonna try to cover up? I'm not aware of anything, other than roads and parking lots and things like that. And, if we're, I'm, I'm having trouble encouraging vegetative cover to the extent it includes scrub live oak thickets that a rabbit can't crawl through, chameese thickets, mancena thickets, second growth, brush in the forests. The kind of thing that gave us the Butte Fire and the Rim Fire. Why in the world would we wanna do that? We should be doing exactly the opposite.
Old Gulch, another example.
And, in that sense, I have the exact same problem. Consistent with fire protection needs, with, and then it goes on with new development, to facilitate carbon sequestration. The facilitating carbon sequestration is associated with the first part of the sentence, but one fire like Butte, and you've blown your, your carbon sequestration for the next hundred years.
I think we all understand that, with, you know, that's, we certainly didn't plan for that fire, we certainly didn't desire that fire. And, and those are kind of catastrophes that happen.
But I believe the catastrophe happened because we weren't worrying about our vegetation. Now I'm looking at the sides of our highways, and that vegetation is on us.
And, and maybe the focus of this, I mean, if we, if you decide not to just delete it altogether, the focus is more on new development, where rather than paving the entire site, there are areas still retaining a fire, you know, fire protective measures, but you do keep some natural vegetation.
I'd rather see new developments cutting buffers.
If you got, if you identify it as a new development requirement, because otherwise, there's a lot of programs. In fact, Supervisor Edson is championing one that talks about, you know, getting rid of the brush for the purposes of the water, watershed management and fire. And it's, you know, it sounds like a good program. As this is worded, it would run smack up against this element, as I see it.
Or some way to do this without creating ladder fuels, which is the big problem. I mean, little bit of grass will let a fire move, but it isn't gonna do with ladder fuels, which are, you know, one, one to eight feet tall.
Right, it's not the problem.
Yeah.
So do we have enough policies in here that we can delete 3.5?
I think so.
Don't we have in the, where, home, housing, or one of them, about the landscaping requirements? Doesn't, when we, if we're gonna limit this to new development, which at the minimum we should, aren't we covered by the, by landscape requirements from?
Plant development.
I think it's in the land use element.
Land use, it's in land use.
About requiring landscaping and.
Yeah, and not just, so not just landscaping for the purpose of aesthetics, but landscaping for the purpose of having some minimal level of vegetation, vegetation on site.
I think that was for aesthetics.
Yeah, I, I think it was primarily for aesthetics, didn't talk about carbon.
But, I mean, it, it could accomplish both.
It, it could, I mean, it's, it does both.
And that was an ordinance yet to be written, correct?
Right.
So the ordinance could be modified to have this goal, this dual purpose goal.
We could modify this policy to, to focus more on landscaping, and then the implementation measure goes, you know, points back to the land use element measure, I don't remember what, what number that was, that says we're gonna create landscape standards.
We're gonna create landscape standards, and in the process, if we could also have an eye toward whatever you had in, you know, whatever the county has in mind here, with respect to having some minimal percentage of the development be vegetation, instead of rooftops and pavement.
Right, and I think it primarily gets to pavement, you know, maybe we have a certain percentage of a parking lot that actually has landscape, you know, islands in it with trees that, you know, shade the pavements, or create, you know, reduces the heat, and also then, you know, serves as that sequestration for.
Or there's a setback that's planted, right?
There's a, you know, we, we often require a, you know, perimeter landscaping.
Yeah.
And in some jurisdictions, they also require internal landscape islands. So there's a certain percentage of the parking lot, once the trees are mature, that is shaded.
Right.
Beneficial to the people parking there, because they provide shade.
Everything else.
And all the other benefits of that.
And so this really, as it's limited, being limited to new development, doesn't add anything to that goal that we've already stated we want, and we're moving ahead with it, in the form of an ordinance. So with that in mind, 3.5 is superfluous.
Unless we wanna point to that measure as a way to sort of demonstrate, here's how we are trying to.
For purposes of showing, showing the state that we're, we're addressing the issue.
Well, or just, you know, demonstrating to ourselves, when, when we go to create that, those standards of that ordinance, we also look at, oh, that's right, we're also trying to consider greenhouse gas reduction and carbon sequestration.
Okay, so how would that read hypothetically? That's a challenge, too.
Yeah, off the top of my head, what if I bring that back?
Okay.
There, there's no way to do expansion of vegetation cover and be consistent with fire protection needs.
Well, I don't think, we, we'll necessarily talk about expansion, I, this will be substantially reworded to focus more on landscaping for new development as a means to not only look at the aesthetic value of landscaping for development, but also to benefit the greenhouse gas issue.
To the extent that you include grass as vegetative cover, it doesn't pose near the fire danger that brush does, or clumps of little trees. You can put out a grass fire pretty easy. So I'm not, I'm not convinced you even need this, because the grass is gonna grow unless you pave it over anyway, but.
Well, so when I'm thinking of land cover, I'm, I'm thinking of the clover that grows everywhere that is oil based, and it goes so fast, you can't stop it. And they have mandated now that all of that has to be removed around our, in our properties. So, that's, that's where I don't see it fitting into.
Well, I, I think what I'm suggesting is that this, we'll bring this back as a completely rewritten policy that addresses new development only, and refers back to the land use element and landscaping requirements.
Okay, is that, so Peter's gonna rework it?
Just sort of link the aesthetic value of landscaping to the greenhouse gas reduction value as well.
Okay, sounds good. Continuing on.
3.6, encourage alternatives to open burning of yard debris and construction clearing. We have serious issues, obviously, with that in our county, especially this year, because we have nowhere to take our pine needles. Yes, Red Hill is back open, but they only take two yards, they don't take it from commercial haulers, only personal residences. So nobody has anywhere this year to take their pine needles to, and it is gonna be a serious burning year this year. So we do need alternatives.
And that's the whole point, is just, let's develop the alternatives where we can. One of the things that we looked at was, Cal Waste is developing a pine needle wattle. You could take your pine needles to the Cal Waste facility at the old cement plant, and they're converting those, or making wattles, rose control wattles out of that.
At the old spent plant, where?
Yeah, San Andreas, San Antonio Station Road.
Where is that?
Yeah, you don't know where that is.
I know the cement plant, but I don't know where, where they take it out there.
Somewhere back in one of the old areas of, I, I haven't been there, I just know.
And they have a permit to be able to accept those pine needles, so that they're not gonna get into an overload like Red Hill did?
Yes, and this actually came out of the fact that Red Hill was closed, and people had no place to put their pine needles. So we were, they were being burnt.
And there's a need for wattles.
And there's need for wattles, a lot of wattles needed. So, particularly up in the high country, where, you know, using straw wattles introduces noxious weeds and other, you know.
Well, they do say they're free of that.
Yeah, usually.
Yeah, I mean, supposedly, that's what they're using.
And so when those wattles ultimately disintegrate, you've got the, you know, native vegetation that's also disintegrated.
The pine needles, yeah.
And it's, you know, win, win, win all the way around.
So, but the point is, is that supporting ideas like that, alternatives, is what this policy's getting at.
Moving on.
I have a 3.7.
Okay.
3.7, encourage energy conserving construction techniques and the use of alternative energy sources in new construction. And the implementation measure is 3G. And 3G is talking about, looks to me, a fairly large scale. It's not a residential rooftop type of thing. It's a, a quote, production facility, wants to be compatible with surrounding uses, such as solar arrays in parking lots that serve to provide shade and energy production, et cetera, et cetera. So, when we say new construction in 3.7, does it need to be more close, more, more accurately defined as new construction, you know, multifamily units, or, 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 you know, large scale commercial, medium large scale commercial?
Well, the second part of that does speak to coordinate with and support state and federal programs to assist landowners in energy conservation and production.
Yeah, but that doesn't further define it. It does talk about every, it's all owned by a landowner, but it.
So I think it, it really is tend to cover the full range of an individual homeowner that, that wants to provide, you know, a small, you know, small wind facility. The state actually passed laws several years ago that requires counties and cities to adopt an ordinance to regulate, you know, and encourage allowing people to put small windmills on their houses, as a way to generate additional power. And, and, you know, similarly, the way that people have been putting. And, you know, similarly the way that people have been putting solar panels on. So to have our codes, you know, reflect, you know, the ability to do that and simplify the means to do that so that, you know, it's a simple process. The other thing I think that the county could really benefit from would be, you know, someone who puts in a small, you know, a commercial business, one thing they could do is put solar powers, you know, solar panels above the parking lot, the power there, I've seen this done in a number of places where you park underneath the solar.
Make a covered, make a cover.
Covered parking and the roof are solar panels.
Right, excellent idea, but with that in mind and with residential in mind, then why say new construction, why not everybody? Why not retrofitting as well?
Well, in the, are you on 3G or are you on the policy?
Policy.
3.7.
Okay, so you're back on the policy.
I'm jumping back to the language of 3.7, so I agree, it's a good idea to look at it, consider it for, you know.
We can strike the last three words, in new construction, and it makes it general for everything.
Yeah, I would like that too.
Now, that would mean that with respect to new construction, I mean, there's not going to be any requirement for this, it's just going to be, the state wants us to have a building code and the.
Or development standards, if we're saying you were going to require landscaping in a parking lot, but we could have as an alternative, a solar array to provide shade.
Because you don't have room for both, take your pick.
Right.
Okay.
So those are, that's a quick example off the top of my head that we could, many others.
All right. Now, 3.8.
Wait, before you go on, I mean, what about in the implementation measure of 3G? I mean, because your point was that it seems to be aimed at big development.
I read it that way.
What if we added in the last part, federal programs that assist landowners and individual homeowners? You know, so if we made it clear that it was also for individual.
Well.
Landowners encompasses all of it.
It's the word facilities that gets me, because that's, that to me means an array. Now, you could call a rooftop an array too, and it is. I just, it looked to me like, scale wise, it was pretty big.
Right.
If you said energy producing, you know, devices, look, you could leave it alone. As long as, as long as the 3.7 doesn't talk about new construction, it's good for retrofitting and individual homes and everybody else, that's fine. If we have a policy, we can show the state, here's how we're going about implementing this, I'm good with it. 3.8, on the other hand, which references the same implementation measure, talks about biofuels and other systems. Now, you've got the potential here to run afoul of your air quality goals because you're not going to burn a biofuel without creating a carbon problem, a greenhouse gas emission problem, it's not possible. The least of those, that's not even biofuel, it's hydrocarbon and that's methane, any biofuel is going to, is going to cause you a problem over here.
I guess my thought on this was if you have a biofuel plant, it's probably more controlled, it has some emission reduction.
It has a scrubber?
Then, then, then open burning, you know, where someone's done clearing on their property.
If this is directed toward a facility at a landfill, for example, and it's burning, and now you're otherwise going to cover that stuff up so there is no burning, so you are still increasing your carbon, I don't have a problem with it because I think it's a good idea.
Right.
But it ought to be directed toward plants. See, this doesn't do that, this is like, it's not specific. When it comes to biofuel, and I don't know what it's meant by other systems, but when it comes to biofuel.
Anything else out there we haven't talked about?
You've got to have your catalytic devices and your scrubbers and all that to come out clean.
Well, the example is, we have a proposal that's been pending for a while for the CHIPS facility up in Wiltseville, and they want to take all of the biofuels off the forest that are now being burned in open burn piles.
Oh.
And use it to generate power.
Okay, now that's replacing a really bad version of burning. Perfect.
Yes. So any, any project like that, it's going to have to look at the air quality impacts, and they're going to have to mitigate those impacts by putting in whatever emission control techniques that are available and feasible for that scale of project.
Okay, then if 3.7 relates to any kind of a project, new or old, individual house or a shopping center, then that's covered, then instead of the language of 3.8 as it is right now, it seems to be that you would want to then shift gears and talk about alternative energy generating systems of a bigger scale, directed toward, you know, larger, larger scale systems and to include biofuel burning systems, generating facilities.
I think he's already covered that.
My point is, you have already covered that part of it, all you're talking about 3.7 and 3.8.
The two policies do sort of overlap, and we're not, I'm not trying to, you know, limit one or the other by scale, you know, if it's small scale individual homes or a utility scale facility, it's all good. One was more towards energy conserving, although we do sort of convolute that with using alternative energy sources, maybe that line really belongs more in 3.8. One's energy conserving construction, so you have, you know, greater insulation or other techniques that can be used to reduce the use of energy, this is the production of energy. And I guess, just in the crafting of this, I got the two sort of mixed up a little bit. So I don't know if we want to modify 3.7 to make sure that that concept of the use of energy alternative, alternative energy sources in construction, I guess this was more like, how would you include this in a new project of construction that's not a power gener, you know, the primary use isn't power generating.
Okay, with my.
3.8 addresses actual power generation, that's the primary source of the purpose of the project. 3.7 says we can include power generating features in a development project.
Okay, then if, then three, if you, if you limit 3.8, you separate them by conserving energy or producing energy. 3.7 then being limited to conserving energy, you just put a period, okay?
After techniques.
And all you're, all you're generating, whether it's single family, retrofitted, new, doesn't matter, it's all in 3.8.
But I think the reason why I think it's important to keep that other phrase, last phrase in there is that you could have, you know, a commercial building that has solar panels or wind or whatever it is, the primary purpose of that is still commercial retail business, it's not generating power.
Right.
And maybe it supplements its power by, you know, this alternative method. 3.8 is really geared towards a project that is intended to generate power as its primary purpose.
Okay, I understand. I understand the difference that you, that you had in mind.
So I really love to encourage people to think about.
With that explanation, I'm much better.
Okay.
I'm much more comfortable with it.
All right, good.
Any other comments before we ask the public?
Do you want to go to the public now or do you want to keep going?
It's up to you guys.
I think you should go to the public.
I think we should go to the public too.
Okay.
No, no, there's more than that.
We've got two pages to go, but maybe we take care of greenhouse gases and we wrap up the rest depending on the time.
Let's do that.
Did you want to look ahead to see what kind of volume of stuff is up ahead, because I would, if you did, I have very little on the implementation measures, as far as just notes and questions, not a whole lot of volume there from me. Not that I'm, if you wanted to take a survey, maybe you could.
Well, I guess the survey would be, do you have many comments on scenic resources, recreational resources, or cultural and paleontological, paleontological, there are some?
I have, yes.
A lot? Well, then I think we should go.
Not a lot, three each.
Well, I think we should just do the greenhouse gases.
Three on scenic and three on recreation.
Okay, so let's just do air quality and greenhouse gases. Yeah?
Okay.
We'd have been through if we hadn't stopped talking.
I know, right?
Okay, so would anyone in the public like to address the commission on goals and policies of air quality and greenhouse gases? Page 14, and a little bit of 15.
Peter Rayes, General, a couple of things, there was a mention of quality of life, I think each one of us has my, have a different conception of quality of life, 3C. Power generation, right now we're getting our electricity from Canada, and if you notice, I know you guys, regardless of how much you've been cutting back, like I do, my PJNE bill keeps going up to a ridiculous point. Couple of years ago, PJNE used to pay me, now they want me to pay them fourteen, fifteen bucks a year for a privilege so they can take my electricity, so be careful with PJNE. Now, I never got an answer, and it's been, this number was mentioned a couple of times, what was 1990 standards? I've been asking everybody, nobody gave me the numbers, what was the 1990 standards?
We said that Peter was going to follow up on that, we've got notes.
Because up to now, nobody knows, okay?
Yeah, nobody up here knew either, we're going to follow up.
But it's, if you don't know what was at 1990, why are you going to meet it? It's the fire protection, I like to mention it, that beside you folks on Highway 4, along Highway 26, we have a little problem with the Manzonia, and we've been talking with the firefighters. There's a tremendous amount of energy, and there's a negative energy around Rancho, for instance. Now, that's a developed area, people, but I got, I'm looking at, I'm a city boy, a couple of hundred acres of Manzonia, because I own both sides of the hell of this river. And if that goes, it's going to go to Rancho, and it's going to jump the hill down toward the other side with Nohoga, and there's a lot of, not just a house here and there, a lot of land. Now, talking to the gentleman who bought this new waste business, waste collection business, excellent people, and I mentioned to him that back in Cantor Costa County, it was on a ballot, something similar what they have in Patterson.
In where?
Patterson, on the other side of the valley. They're burning from tires to garbage, pollutant free, they got catalytic converter, water coolers, lay above Mark Bay grade. But they make more money out of creating electricity for the Sandwaking Valley, and cleanly, and for somebody to be clean in Sandwaking qua, county, that's an accomplishment. And I offered it to, a couple of supervisors, I offered it to the guy who owns the garbage company, yes, they are interested, it's just a question of will somebody put the cherry bomb, somewhat cavity, to get it going. We could be totally energy independent in this county. There was a deal from Sacramento that was willing to give you a grant or whatever you call it, a small energy producer, the ones who live on those creeks, that you can put it next to it, and minimum, you can buy you a house. And that's up high enough in the hills, that's a year round deal, night and day. The fire protection is the one that's really interested me, because beside, and that's the planning department and public works or whoever, building department, simple thing, my sister lives right next to me, I made sure that her house has metal roof, I made sure that she has fiber cement siding, I'm sure a certain temperature would burn, but fiber cement is not like wood siding. So my house is all fiber cement, I don't have no roof because it's a round house, but it's worth it. So the fire protection, what was once 1999, power generation and a quality of life, and so, they have options out there, and we could suggest to people who want to have a wood cabin up in the boonies, as far as I'm concerned from a city boy, well, they can make it out of fiber cement houses, what metal roofing that looks like wood. Because the fire department, the politicians up in Sacramento tell you a hundred feet, but you talk to the grunts, the ones who go out and bust their ball, what, to put the fire out, they talk about five hundred feet, because when you have a fire, you're going to have the wind, should be clearance, so, and it's the garbage on the ground that's rots away, that's like kindling wood, that's got to be cleaned up. That's the one that you control. You want to see a safer fire, a house from fire in Valley Spring, you see all these nice streets, they got a couple of goats running around, and there's no garbage on the floor.
Mr. Ray, is your time just about up?
Shut up and leave, yes?
No, no, just that your time's just about up.
Okay, so there is options to make it safer and save money. This county could be and should be totally energy independent, we got it, because if we don't burn that garbage in the trunk, we take it to a landfill, they cover it up, and they put a chimney on it, and you see the little flame? It's still burning it, but it's a lot slower.
Thank you.
Vicki Ranky, again, this section as before, air quality and greenhouse gases, first of all, I guess you have to believe in that, and sadly, I don't, and I know it's a state mandate, but the state of California is pretty progressive and kind of stuck their necks out, and AB 32 is disaster, and now we in these rural counties who don't contribute to this really, have to try to prove that we're going to somehow make it less. I don't, I guess, to me, it just seems like such nonsense, and so it's very frustrating. I would like to believe or think that somehow counties can start standing up to the state and not letting them just railroad over the top of us and cause us to put in these silly rules to people, taking away their personal rights. So this thing, and again, a lot of this stuff reads to me like living down in the valley, okay? In the valley, you have a lot of cement, you need to put more trees so that you can have carbon sequestration, however they call it, sequestration. We don't need it up here, we have forests, we are the reason our state probably is in better shape than it should have been because we are who we are up here with all the vegetation and the trees. So to even talk about this up here just seems silly. I don't know, and I don't mean to say like, well, you guys are just wasting your time because I know the state pushes some of this down on us, but when are we going to start standing up to the state and saying this is nonsense? And then telling builders how they're going to build their properties, that now we're not going to let a builder come in unless they do something that's greenhouse sensitive. I know we have building codes, and I know already the building codes have been taken over by that kind of policy, so, you know, already builders are being pushed into putting things into their house that cost them more money to build a house, so where's the affordable housing now? Because now they have to put sprinkler systems in all the houses, no matter where you are. Anyway, I guess my thing is more my frustration with this, I would like to see us really narrow this down, encouraging alternative burning of debris, okay, that's a good thing, that's a positive thing, but being able to maybe prove to the state that we don't need a lot of this because we are, in the state of California, helping the state already in a big way because we are rural. So I guess I'm not giving you quite an answer, but, and the thing about free markets, when energy, alternative energy becomes affordable, when it becomes, and it makes sense, people are going to put that in their houses because it makes sense, but right now, it's expensive, some of it doesn't work, and to force people into it, I feel like we're going back to the, to the 1800s where we have to have a windmill on our house, come on, we've had windmills already in our society, we got energy because they found oil in the ground and they found natural gas, and they found out that, you know what, these are really productive pieces of energy that are going to change our lives, and it has, okay? Does anybody want not to be able to turn these lights on in this building because the sun didn't shine today? Anyway, I guess this is just a very frustrating discussion, and I hope you don't fall into it too deeply with the state, and, you know, I'm for sure one that will start. And, you know, I'm for sure one that will start fighting the state on some of this stuff, because this is ridiculous. I don't know. So, that's just my concern, and I hope that as you guys all make decisions, you realize that we shouldn't be here to tell people how to build their houses and how to run their lives, but make broader, more sensible decisions. Thanks.
Thank you.
On three point five.
Could, I'm sorry, could you please?
Oh, sorry.
Your name for the record?
Vicky Mills.
Thank you.
On three point five, I would like to see, consistent with fire protection needs, stay in there. As a former firefighter, and being on the Murphy's Fire Board for nine years, with the fire protection needs, consistent with the fire protection needs, that is getting rid of the ladder that Ted talked about. That is using people like your fire safe council to get rid of ladders and excess fuel. If you do the grasses, as Kelly said, it is a lot better than having that brush or masses of blackberry bushes. So, if you keep that in there, fire protection needs, I don't think you have, this sounds terrible, but I don't think you have a true understanding of what it is. Because it is taking care of the forest. It is taking care of your land. It is getting rid of the things, the high, quick burning fuels. So, it gives us time to do structure protection. Like I said, coming from a fire background, I would love to see that in there.
Thank you.
Maybe on three point five, add in there retention, expansion, or elimination of the, of the cover and, and the vegetation. Because in some cases, maybe it's necessary to remove it. You know, and also in, in keeping with the carbon sequestration, because if it's not removed, it's gonna burn down the good trees that are sequestering, so. Also, too, I just wanted to mention that I do have a video when this concept of getting the emissions down to nineteen ninety levels by the year 2020. There was a gentleman that went around selling this concept to all the counties, and one sharp supervisor did ask him if, in fact, there were, if there was data back to nineteen nineties, and he said there wasn't. And I have that video, I could share that. I wasn't prepared for this today, but I would be happy to share that. And this is back when all this silly movement first started. So, also, I agree with Vicky that this general plan is creating artificial markets in some cases with, you know, trying to encourage this kind of a product be put, say it's one of those ugly solar panels in a parking lot, or, you know, different kinds of products. That creates artificial markets, and artificial markets are unsustainable in the long term. They, they always fail and come with a higher cost. And also, I heard something about landscaping for aesthetics. I hope this is not in the general plan. The county has no business telling a business how to landscape for aesthetics. That's a private business. It's their decision how to do something like that. And it sounds an awful lot like centralized planning, like a European country, which America tried to get away from, while they actually were successful in getting away from, and now these concepts are creeping back in to have top-down government. And it just seems like a bunch of busybodies who thinks they know what's best for us. And so, I just hope landscaping for aesthetics is, is not in the general plan, because aesthetics is a matter of opinion, and what might be aesthetically pleasing to one person may be horribly ugly to another. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? All right, so, I'm gonna go through the comments as I heard them, in case if we wanna make any changes to the edits, to the element. I think, other than personal opinions, Peter's comment had to do with the question about the nineteen ninety standards, and, and as Lisa said, we are gonna be getting more information about that when I think this element comes back to us. Is that correct, Peter?
Yes.
Okay.
I think he also brought up the issue about sort of waste of energy, and I think that's fully covered under three point eight, under other systems. So, if someone wanted to propose a waste of energy project in this county, it would be consistent with three point eight.
Okay. Thank you for that addition. Let's see. I think, you know, Vicky Ranky's, I saw, I mean, it was like opinions, I don't know that there was anything substantive to offer, you know, other than...
On Vicky's comment, I would suggest a clarification. There's nothing in here, Vicky, that, that requires, that forces people to use any alternative energy device.
It's all volunteer, is what you're saying. It's just like if somebody chose to...
Yeah. It's a, so there's, this is not a building code that says, you're gonna put up a house, you gotta put in solar panels. It doesn't do that.
And this is connected to air quality and greenhouse gas?
Right.
Yes, it's, yes, it's in that, it's in that section. But it doesn't say that you gotta do it. Okay, I'm just, I'm clarifying your remark, because I, I didn't want you to walk away thinking that there's gonna be a requirement that all new development has a solar panel or a windmill on it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. Then, Vicky Mills was suggesting that we consider fire protection needs in the reworking of three point five.
That's part of what we're gonna do, right?
I don't think we were removing the word consistent with fire protection needs. It was in...
Well, we're gonna, I'm gonna rewrite this whole policy.
Right.
Narrow the focus a little bit.
Encouraging retention and expansion.
Fire protection is still an issue that I'll address. We'll see if I hit the mark with the revision.
They slam into each other, those two sentences.
Right, the two parts of the sentence. So, you might end up actually with a couple of different pieces there, right?
Yeah, possibly.
Okay.
Well, I think when you're doing that, the sense I have is that this retention and expansion of vegetative cover, viewed in a broad sense, is really not consistent with fire protection needs.
Correct.
And the fire protection needs extend past the perimeter of somebody's house, as a beautifier is demonstrated. And we're talking about the whole landscape here that, that needs to be addressed. And if this, you know, I guess I have to say that you can write something that deals with new development and landscaping and, and that, and that's fine. But I, I have to raise the question whether we ought to be encouraging getting rid of a lot of vegetative cover in this county. I'm not too sure how the county does that, because a lot of it's air quality driven. And as long as the state says, you know, Mr. So-and-so, you can't burn on your private land to get rid of the, the brush loads, the county doesn't have a whole lot to say about that.
I love seeing green lawns, but mine's dead, because I couldn't water it this year. So, it became more of a fire hazard.
I think that as we get into the safety element, we'll see policies that look at enhancing fire protection measures, particularly as it deals with the, you know, the vegetation and implement, implementing fire safe measures. Five point, or three point five, I'll be bringing back. It'll be modified substantially to address really more of new development, and how incorporating vegetation in new development is, you know, and, and rather than the huge landscape picture of, you know, the, the, I think the encourage retention, expansion of vegetative cover paints this picture of, we wanna see more brush and more, no, that's not what, what was intended here. So, if you'll allow me to bring back some revised language to sort of more narrowly focus this policy, and then we can get into the fire protection issues, you know, much more detailed with the safety element. But I will definitely include language that considers fire protection.
That won't conflict with what we...
That won't conflict with what we've got going.
What's coming down the road on, on safety.
Right.
Thank you.
Allowing people to do the clearing of the problem brush for safety.
Yeah. There is no question, I mean, when it comes to fire protection, fire safety versus house gas, I, I think it's very clear, fire safety is gonna take precedent.
Well, our fires can put that greenhouse gases through the roof.
Yeah. So, to the degree that we can protect our communities from catastrophic fires, that should be one of our highest priorities.
Agreed.
And in the process, protecting the rest of the world from all the pollution that we create when we don't do that.
Yeah. But where there's areas where we can, you know, with new development, rather than paving the whole site, house and landscaping that provides some trees that help sequester carbon, hey, why not? Let's do it.
Okay.
Because it's, it's the small steps we can take to meet the state's goals.
Thank you very much. So, we will wait to see that back from you.
Yeah.
And then Tanya Dow, she had some language, I think, also regarding three point five, but I didn't get the specifics. Did, did you guys?
Well, I think it was sort of on the same issue that she's proposing to eliminate vegetation, so we're clearing the areas that are fire hazards, as opposed to expanding. So, we can, play with that.
All right. Was there anything else? Are we, so, should we...
Is there skipping for aesthetics in there? Is it in the general plan?
It's already in the land use element.
Yes.
Wow. So...
Okay. So, shall we move on? Should we just continue this? I mean, it's four thirty now.
We probably had a pretty good stopping point.
That's what I'm thinking.
I'm gonna have a lot on scenic resources.
Okay, so, we're given that, then let's, let's, let's stop now.
I've got some notes going on here, too.
So, we wanna talk about...
So, we'll continue the hearing, and then the question is to when? We've got every Thursday sort of reserved, so if we wanna hold a special hearing, we can continue it for a week. If we wanna wait until the twenty-eighth, because you're then, I know that two people are gonna be gone on the twenty-eighth.
Two people are going to be doing what?
So, who's all not gonna be here? Let's talk about for the next two. You said for the next two?
I've got two Thursdays in a row, I'm not here.
So, the twenty-first and the twenty-eighth.
I'm going on the twenty-eighth.
If Commissioner Toone is content to provide written comments...
I have written comments that I will supply with respect to the circulation element.
No, no, to this one.
To this one.
Right. Contamination, open space.
The remainder of my notes, how would I do, do that?
You give it to me, and then we can share them, and they give me, they're available publicly.
Okay, so, I will send it to Peter.
So, are you all right with that?
I, I think that this general plan business is important enough that all the commissioners should be here, if at all possible, for these sessions.
Well, I would agree with you. That's why I asked Commissioner Toone.
And so, I would prefer not to be taking up general plan matters on either the twenty-first or twenty-eighth, if there's gonna be people absent unavoidably.
Okay, that's up, that, the commission.
Well, I appreciate that. I would like to be here for both the remainder of this one and the circulation element. I appreciate that very much. We have one precedent where you had to be gone, and it was an important element that we were dealing with. I think it was land use, or it was one of them.
Put it on.
And...
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there business for the, for the commission?
We do have, twenty eighth, we've got, well, the appeal of the cell tower. We've had a request for a continuance of that. The, one of the appellants has agreed to that. We're still waiting to hear back, so that will likely be continued. We've got another project, I think it'd be this diverse market that will be on that agenda.
I would, I would offer this note, that with respect to the general plan, ask them, in terms of our relationship with the board of supervisors' progress, we are way ahead of them. We are months ahead of them.
You're not submitting anything until we're done with this.
No, I'm gonna be submitting a complete packet when we're done, once we're done, to the board.
So, they're not, this isn't going to...
Oh, I thought you were gonna be dealing with the elements by element as we get through them.
No.
They're waiting for us.
Yeah.
They've got a lot to deal with. They haven't missed us.
Then I read the outline, I read the outline wrong, or I interpreted the outline.
The only thing that went to them was the vision and the guiding principles, because that set the tone for a lot of the other, for the elements itself. That's the reason why that went to them in advance.
Okay.
I mean, I, we're, we're less further along than I had hoped we would be at this point in time, of no fault of your own.
You had a fire, you had a lot of things...
It's a lot of work, a lot of things happening, and it's just taken a lot longer to sort of get through all these edits and get them to you. I would like to try to speed up our process a little bit more, regular meetings as much as we possibly can. I know, you know, during the last two months, a lot of holidays, a lot of things going on, we had the fire, that got us a little bit behind. Part of it's my fault for just not being able to get to everything and, you know, regularly getting you the edits that we need to. I'm hoping that that will change, that, you know, we'll have plenty of work to do, and just a matter of being able to schedule hearings as regularly as possible. If we, I would, I guess at this point in time, it sounds like the desire of the commission is to ensure that there's a full, you know, everyone's being here for the hearings on the general plan. So, the next available Thursday would be the first Thursday of February, whatever date that is.
Are you gone for two weeks, you said?
I've gone for two.
I think it's the fourth, the fourth of February.
As a compromise, I've got lots of notes on implementation programs, but there's a lot of, a lot of it's just kind of questions, like I don't understand a point, and if I do, maybe I'm okay with it, and if I do, maybe I'm not okay with it. But as a compromise, I could submit my notes on the balance of this element, and, and then you give me the courtesy of not addressing circulation until I'm here. But that would be the same week you're not here anyway. So...
Well, I think it's important to have the give and take amongst the commissioners and with the public on this general plan.
Okay. Then I appreciate the...
I was just gonna say, is there, there a way we can, well, we could talk less and maybe get things done quicker, that might help you.
That's up to you guys.
If you can have it on other than a Thursday, then I'm, good. I just have, I'd be traveling both those days back. Don't envy me, I'm going to Minneapolis in the middle of winter, so.
I mean, that's what I was gonna ask. Does it have to be on a Thursday? If we could have a, a meeting next week and he was back a different day?
There might be conflicts with the, noticing the other committees use this.
We could do it in the gazebo, they're friendly.
Why don't, why don't, rather than trying to figure that out now, I'll get a schedule of when this room is available, and maybe as a way to catch up a little bit, we could double up on some meetings in the future.
That'd be great.
I, I don't think at this point in time, we could clearly state, oh, yes, it's definitely available on, you know, a week from Tuesday, therefore, let's hold a meeting, because I, you know, we'd take some time to track that down. Part of my concern is Annette's time and the ability to sit here throughout a meeting and not get all the rest of the work done, but that's what we do. We'll, we'll figure out a way. It's, the top priority of the department is get this thing done and get it to the board so we can start the EIR. And it's a critical step. So, my recommendation is we continue this to February fourth. Hopefully, by then, we'll have the rest of this and either the circulation element or the background report back to you, so we can just move right into that, once we finish this part.
Then I'm not sending you anything.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
So... So is that the consensus that we're gonna continue till the...
Actually, if I could make a recommendation?
Yes.
To David, I can't?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. If, he just has a bunch of questions on things. If he could submit his questions ahead of time and maybe save us a couple hours answering his questions, and then if there are questions that he doesn't like the answers to, we'll discuss them out. But he might be able to get some of his answers ahead of time.
But then there's the brown ass business, isn't there?
Yeah, we start, I mean...
Mr. Mr. Wooster brought up a good point there. I have issues that I write down that I know I'm gonna have, and then I have other issues that come up during the discussion. The point that you brings up, that you bring up, Ted, Kelly?
I only said that because you said some of them are just questions.
Well, I was trying to, I was gonna give you a compromise that if you really wanted to get through this element in my absence next week, I'm not gonna stand in your way. I'll send you my notes, my questions.
So they weren't just questions, they were actually...
Oh, sure. Oh, yes, notes, probably.
Okay, there you go. Never mind.
Okay. So we are gonna continue discussion on the, on the general plan, particularly the conservation open space element until Thursday, February 4th. Any other business?
You probably already heard, but we received, uh, six appeals on the decision on the asphalt plant. That is likely to be heard on February 9th by the Board of Supervisors. I say that likely because that's the last meeting that's available before the 45-day time period in which we have to hear the appeal is available. So, but until the board actually sets that agenda, I can't say definitely it'll be that day. But it's the only day available, so it's likely to be that day. Um, trying to think of anything else of importance that you should know about, and we'll just continue on with, finish this up, circulation, uh, background reports almost done, and then we'll get into the rest of the elements. We're getting there.
So circling background, are, you are gonna be looking at all the other days that the commission could meet?
Yes.
Okay.
If, if we wanna do that, you know, when, when I was, we were going through the same exercise in Eldorado County about 10, 15 years ago. Um, the commission was meeting twice a week, weekly, to get through. Because this is a lengthy, involved process, and it's time-consuming.
Okay. So...
But to do the...
But I, I heard that there's some, um, desire to at least look at alternatives and maybe like double, double days on weeks when we could do it.
Sure.
Yeah.
What I'll do is I will identify days that this room is available.
Okay.
Send out that calendar to you, and if you could tell me what days you're all available, then we can sort of, you know, narrow that down to, okay, we've got three or four opportunities for extra hearings. Who wants to meet at this point in time?
Okay.
And then as we get into, you know, after the next meeting, we say, okay, well, we've got, you know, now we're, we're ready to go with, you know, hopefully I'll have circulation and we'll, we'll be backed up a little bit.
You could calendar them all in.
They'll get a calendar, they're in, you know, in easier.
Yeah. But you would have to have the majority of all saying it's, or it's gotta be Wednesday, you know, February 3rd, or, you know...
Yeah, and what I'm hearing is...
It's gotta be everyone.
You know, everyone is available.
That's right. That's right. Okay. All right. Anything else? Any other?
After circulation comes, um, safety?
Well, also the technical background report will be slipped back in.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, we've got the technical background report, and then we have the safety and the public facilities and services element to do. Uh, then we'll have the, um, community plans, which, that, there may be a little delay there because it's gonna be a lot of work. And then the, uh, land use map, and we may swap those, but I'd sort of like to get through the community plans first before we do the maps.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Peter, where did you insert circulation?
That's next.
Circulation's next.
Next.
Yes, next. Yeah.
That or the background report, one or the other. Depends which one gets done first.
Right. All righty. Well, with that, we are continued until February 4th.
Did you have a last public comment period?
Oh, no, we didn't. I'm sorry. Thank you, Annette. All right. So now, this is an opportunity, again, we have a public comment period, so if you'd like to address the commission on an item that's not on our agenda, no, and thank you. Okay, so...
See, we included them all day long.
Yeah. So we are, we are adjourned.
Thank you.